We have so much to do tonight. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Do we approve?
Second.
Paul and Jerry?
Alright.
Alright, um, managers report.
I wanted to announce that the gun ordinance that the township had adopted is being reviewed by the township attorney. And, um, once we have his revisions, then supervisors will consider changing the ordinance. The, and, and once we have that, those revisions, they will also be put on the website for everybody to review. The rental ordinance that we have been working on has now been revised by our attorney, and supervisors are reviewing that ordinance. Um, a draft will be put on the website for everybody to review. The 2013 audit is in process. I wanted to announce that our PICO rep has agreed to come to a public meeting. He may come, he may be able to come to our March work session, I'm not sure yet, so when I get a definite date, I will send out, I'll put it on the website, but I'll also send out an alert message to everybody who signed up for the alerts. Um, so he has agreed to come and answer questions and listen to everyone's concerns from the last storm. While we're on that subject, our roadmaster's here, and I really wanted to congratulate them on a great job that they did during this.
I'd also like to, to do that, I want to tell the roadmaster that he could get an outstanding job. I also want to say that Lisa did an outstanding job running the ship upstairs to make sure that things were, were under control, people were not left without any support or any way of communicating. There was an awful lot to be done during a very turbulent time, and so I want to thank Lisa as well as Roger.
And I did, I wanted to point out something else that Roger and I were discussing today, how, you know, there's so many potholes in the surrounding townships, there's not that many in kind of townships. And I didn't understand the reason for that, and Roger explained to me today that when you use straight salt, that deteriorates the roads, and we don't use straight salt. I know a lot of people complain about that, we use a 50/50 mix. More or less. So, that's why we, our roads are not in as bad a shape as some of the surrounding townships.
What is the other?
It's a, it's a small rice stone that is used more for grinding, or for traction.
Pebbles.
Yeah, it's a, it's like quarter inch rice is what they call it, but it's a little traction. But we have plenty of ice, but those make a mess, we will be sweeping that up here soon as we can get the snow melted.
And we did have a lot of mailboxes that were knocked down during the storm, a lot of people called, they were upset about that. They think, a lot of people think that our plow hits and it's really the snow that hits the mailbox. Um, we, we do try to help residents and put the mailboxes back up, even though our policy is we don't fix mailboxes if they're knocked down by snow, but, you know, we do try to go around and help them. We had some residents who were upset that sprinkler systems were messed up, they're not supposed to have sprinkler systems in a right of way. And also, a couple residents where the lawns were messed up a little bit, but we do go back in the spring and fix them. It's just that right now, we can't go back and fix them. I wanted to give an update on Stevens Gardens, that is the garden center on Route 52 that caught on fire last year. The, at, um, a meeting a couple months ago, the supervisors agreed that if the property owner does not demolish the buildings and remove the debris and clean up the property, that the township would go in and do it and lean the property, which would be, would cost them more money, and obviously, we don't want to go down that route, but it's become a health, safety, welfare issue to keep those buildings standing. Last week, the building inspector and zoning officer and I met with the owners of Stevens Gardens, they told us that they did a huge amount of cleanup out there. I have our fire marshal here today, so I wanted him to briefly explain to the supervisors what he saw when he went out today with our building inspector and zoning officer to determine if they have cleaned up the property, if it's become safe, and they also took an electrical engineer with them.
Correct. Bruce Mitchell Fire Marshal for the township. I went out there today with the, with the, uh...
Can't hear you.
I went out with the codes officers today, and from our previous visit back right after the fire started, and with the letters that we sent in, my opinion is, he hasn't cleaned up a lot. The electrical, the electrical that he has out there is atrocious, it's a fire waiting to happen again. I have my report to Lisa by tomorrow morning of my suggestions, along to Rich. I stopped and talked to Chief McCarthy out, AJ from Longwood, and told him my suggestions. If it's a fire there, it's going to be a ladder pipe operation, nobody's going in inside, it's, it's not good for the firemen at all. It's a, it's hazardous to us. I feel he hasn't done a whole lot. The only thing he's done was he cleaned up the building to the left that he, that caught most of the fire, he cleaned that and tore the roof off. He hasn't cleaned up all around the, the facility that we asked him to. I think his progress is poor. And, uh, I would like to say thank you to Roger and Chief McCarthy during the storm too, because the fire company was out, and when I, we call Roger, Chief McCarthy, uh, they, uh, come and help us support us closing the roads down, so, on behalf of the fire department, I would like to thank Roger and Chief McCarthy.
Thank you. Is there action by the supervisors necessary for the township to act on this situation? Are you, I think you're authorized.
We are, we are. We're getting quotes right now, um, we're having difficulty getting onto the property to get, um, an engineer out there to inspect it, to give us a quote on demolishing, but tomorrow, our engineer is going out there, and he's been given permission to go out there.
They had plastic over that building, are they actually working in there now, or is that just protection or what?
Well, they're not supposed to be working.
Okay. It looks like they still have the building, you know, with a plastic envelope.
And the owners are aware of the summary, or you will make the owners aware of the summary?
Well, the owner was present when they were out there.
Yes, he was, he was present.
But he will get a copy of the summary as well. And I have pictures, the, um, building inspector took.
Yes, Bill?
Hi, Bill McLaughlin. I thought I heard someplace that they were open for business, this is in line with Mr. Hammacher's question. Doesn't the township have the authority to put police tape around there saying that's a police line, do not cross?
No, we have, we put a, um, notice on there that they are not allowed to operate, and they actually had to sign up for a while saying they can't operate due to the township.
But they took that down.
They took that down, but there, it is marked, posted.
Lisa, I, I feel that he's still operating out of there, and, um, it's a hazard, it's totally a hazard in there. I mean, it's, I, I don't want to go, go in there and see somebody get hurt, you know, it's, the electrical is atrocious in that place. I will have a letter to you tomorrow with all my suggestions.
Okay.
I would imagine with all of the melting snow today, the water that's running everywhere, that that has got to exacerbate any electrical issues.
Yes. I mean, the roof is, the roof on the backside of the building, the roof is leaking, water's coming inside, I mean, he has farm animals inside, you know, it's...
Did I see a handle around this side of the room?
There's one back here.
Yes.
I was going to ask, if the township is going to pay for a tearing over that town, then the property is still the man's, and we've done this for this many years.
We would lean the property. So when they were to sell the property, we would get our money back.
Couldn't the township execute on that lien and force a sheriff sale?
As far as I know...
The answer, the answer is yes. Uh, you can convert a lien into a judgment, execute on the judgment if that is the township's desire.
On March 19th at our next public meeting, we'll have a demo from the communications committee of our new website. The supervisors and I will be having a tour of the underground robbery as soon as we get a date finalized in the next couple weeks. The township is applying for grants with the park and rec for benches at their baseball fields, um, so that we're gonna, they're applying for $60,000. And I wanted to give an update on Penn's Manor, that is the development over on Old Baltimore Pike that the township took over and completed. Everything in that development has been completed but a few minor items, one being they have to develop, the contractor has to provide as-built to the township for their work, they have to flush out the drain system, and they have to put some wire on the back of the fencing out there. So they just have a few items left, one major item was the streetlights, which are now operating properly. So we are almost complete in that development. That's all I have.
Are you going to follow up with the executive session?
I wanted to announce that the supervisors held an executive session on February 11th to discuss the acquisition of open space easements and funding commitments for the easements.
And those, those will be the subject of, um, under, um, new business?
Correct.
Okay.
Next, we have the police chief summary. This is for the month of January.
In January of 2014, there were 223 requests for police services received through Chester County Emergency and Community Cases System.
Can you speak up please, Chief? I can't hear you.
In January of 2014, there were 223 requests for police services received through the Chester County Emergency Services Communication System. This number does not include the requests made directly to the Pennsylvania State Police and handled by the state police without the county radio involvement. 116 of these requests were handled by the township police, 107 were handled by the state police when the township police were not working. The township currently provides 80 hours of police services per week. Beginning, in, in January, eight hours of secretarial services have been made available to the police department by the township. Currently, the secretary is working on becoming familiar with the police reporting software. By providing these hours, the township manager and the board of supervisors can have more required paperwork completed by a staff person, so the police can be on the street addressing community problems. Also, if you look at my reporting system, you'll know why we need that. We do have the software system that she's becoming familiar with. In the month on DZ, both police officers worked in the township. Kennett Square's mushroom drop drew a large crowd with increased traffic in the area surrounding the borough. Both the borough and Longwood Gardens used the Exelon parking lot on East Dartford Pike for trucking to the overflow crowds. Scheduled processes were based on service between these parking lots and their locations. The police department learned in January that the township has approved for $5,000 in funding to add additional police hours specifically for aggressive driving enforcement. You will see a January report, there were seven reports of erratic drivers on our roads. You will see in the January report that the seven reports of erratic drivers occurred mostly on Route 1 and Route 52, KLM Road and Hill and Dale Roads. These are four of our heavily strangled roads into township. Finally, I'm grateful for the residents of township responded with their needs and family, were burned out of their home, Hill and Dale and Creek Roads. They're each demonstrated they're willing to care for each other. There is a summary attached, I think it's made available on the website.
Chief, I just wanted to, for on record, is saying that I was very pleased to read the summary, it was very thorough and, um, well presented. I was also very pleased to take a look at the, the list of incidences that were included, and, um, I'm very pleased that that is happening now, and it's, it looks good, and you're being able to take advantage of that software that, that the township provided you, and so I think that's very positive. Thank you.
Well, thank you, I just want to point out one other thing. Roads and fire departments, both our fire companies responded during the storm to at least 50 called peace, that's an awful lot for volunteer firemen. Most of them centered around fires burning because electrical wires either down, or the electric coming back on, causing a surge, or carbon dioxide detectors. A lot of people disregarded their carbon dioxide detectors, and they found out when the fire company got there with that meter, that their house had carbon dioxide in it. Most of it was from portable generators. And one other thing I might point out is, there was a large house burglary at the end of December in the township on Route 52, and it was 20,000 plus. We're working with the state police on that, yeah, there's connections to some other burglaries in the area that we're able to resolve.
Good. Are there any questions, uh, to be directed to the chief while he's at the front?
I, I wanted to point out that there is a police website that will be a section of the township website that's being created as well.
Good, thank you.
So this is the 12-month financial report?
Can you open the mic?
Yeah, let's...
This is the balance sheet for all the funds in the township. So our current assets are $11,658,212. Our fixed assets are $6,690,242. So our total assets are $19,144,694. The liabilities include the, um, loan to the sewer fund of $796,240. This is the 12-month summary for the general fund. The revenues were 3.1 million, which is 11% less, less than last year and 2% less than the budget for 2013. The expenses were 3.6 million, which is 27% greater than last year and equal to the budget. Um, the comparisons are without the sewer loan transactions, which is the loan to the sewer fund and the payment back from the sewer fund. So the net income was a deficit of $560,000. In 2012, we had a surplus of $589,000. The major revenue items, 74% of the revenues are the taxes, which are the real estate tax, the earned income tax, and the property transfer tax. The revenue was $373,000 lower than last year due to the tax revenue being lowered by the supervisors. So you can see here, the current year for earned income tax and real estate property transfer taxes, 2.1 million, last year it was 2.3, and the earned income tax is based on wages. So the service fees were $221,000. Taxes, which is the real estate tax, was $162,000. General government income is $155,000. Permits was $119,000, and all other income was $336,000. The major expenses, we have five major categories that constitute 85% of the township expenses. The overall general fund expenses were 27% higher than last year. The police expenses are 28% higher than budget and 134% greater than last year due to hiring a full-time officer. Last year, the wages and benefits was $965,000, this year it's 1.148, which part of that was due to hiring a full-time building inspector, the other part was due to paying off the employees' liabilities. The fire and emergency services was $570,000 last year, and this year it was $659,000. That is the amount of monies that's contributed to the fire companies. And for 2013, that included the operating costs and the capital. In 2014, the capital is broken out into the capital fund for the fire company donations. The capital expenditures last year were $333,000, this year were $455,000. The police expenses were $152,000 last year, this year the $355,000. And then the all other expenses, the $440,000 last year and $599,000 for the current year. This is the all other expenses broken down, which includes the roads, the maintenance garage, which the increase for the maintenance garage was that we had the maintenance garage parking lot paved this year. The township insurance, which includes insurance for all the township properties, also for the firefighters, we provide, um, workers comp for Longwood Fire Company volunteers, which that cost significantly increased last year due to the new requirements. We have the sewer transfer, last year the general fund loaned the sewer fund $75,000. The committees, the water system, which is all of our hydrant rentals, we have to pay for every hydrant in the township. We pay $2,700 a year for each hydrant. The bikeway project, service fees, which is our streetlights, health and human services, which is our contract with SPCA, inspections and conditional use fees. This is the breakdown of wages and benefit costs. So we have the supervisors' wages, the office wages, road crew snow overtime, the road crew storm overtime, the road crew wages, zoning administration, for a total of $827,673. The police wages are in the, in the police category. The next is the benefits. All employees are provided dental, hospitalization, life insurance, simple IRA, and then of course, there's social security, Medicare, and then they get state pension, which is paid for by the township, and unemployment comp for a total of $321,159. And, um, just so you know, we, we have been doing surveys for salaries, comparing them to other townships in the county, and also benefit surveys. And the other thing on benefits is that the regional planning commission with, which Sutter Stevens is the chair of this year, is doing a benefits analysis to see if they can provide insurance benefits for the region at a cheaper cost. So the beginning balance as of January 1 was $9,580,000. The revenues were $3,060,000. The expenditures were $3,620,000. And then we have the outstanding sewer loan, which is $796,240. The sewer fund paid back $100,000 to the general fund in 2013 for the loan. So our ending balance is $9,295,160. Before I go on, does anybody have questions on the general fund? This is the special funds, the sewer, open space, library tax, and state liquid fuels. This is the sewer fund. Our current year revenue is 1.1 million, 900, uh, $1,194,087. And that includes the residential fees, industrial fees, connection fees, and then money from the general fund for the sewer loan. The expenditures were 1.1 million this year, and that includes all the expenditures for all of our pump stations. We're responsible to pay the electric, the phone, the cost of pump out, pump stations, any maintenance or major repairs that need to be done to the pump stations. The other expense in the pump station is what we pay to the borough because they collect the sewer fees from us that we collect from our residents. So, and I, like I said, we, the sewer fund paid back the general fund $100,000, and we expect that for 2014 as well. This is the pump station analysis of each pump station that we own. For each pump station, we have the revenue and the expenditures, and then we have some of the pump stations, so we have Ashford Pump Station, Bayard Estates, Victoria Gardens, and Lowell Crossing, they're all residential. Creek Road, BFW, Rosedale, and, um, I think those are the only three. They have industrial expenses and revenues in there as well, and connection fees, and when we receive connection fees, they are, um, a revenue for certain pump stations depending on where the flow goes, and then we also have to pay the borough for those connection fees. Right now, um, our business advisory committee is going to work on a study for our pump stations to make sure we're charging what we should, along with our engineer, we're going, later we're going to talk about a proposal from our engineering firm to analyze all the pump stations to determine if we're charging the correct amount, because right now, the township gets charged from the borough, uh, per 1,000 gallon fee, and that's what we pass on to the residents, and the borough gives us an 8% discount for those fees. So, the beginning of the year balance was $189,314, and we added in the additional $75,000 loan. The revenues were 1.1 million, the expenditures were 1 million, and then we had the loan repayment of $100,000, for the ending balance of $282,629 in the sewer fund. This is the open space fund. We received $707,795 total, $666,823 was for open space taxes, $34,607 was for fee and lieu contributions. And the fee and lieu contributions is from a development. For the expenditures, we distributed $157,598 from the fee and lieu, which was broken down to be $39,000 approximately for the Kennedy Area Park and Rec, or, I'm sorry, the Kennedy Area Park Authority, for donations to the park, $33,000 to the Kennedy Area Park and Rec, $15,000 to KU Little League, and $61,000 was reimbursed to a developer who did a reverse subdivision. He originally had a subdivision approved for building lots, and he did a reverse subdivision and had already paid his fee and lieu, so he was reimbursed $61,000 for not building on those lots. So, uh, the current year revenue is $707,000, and the expenditures are $169,000, which is, um, 5% lower than the budget. which is five percent lower than the budget. So the beginning balance for the open space fund was two million, three hundred and thirty-two thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven. The revenue was seven hundred and seven thousand, seven hundred and ninety-five. The expenditure is a hundred and sixty-nine thousand, three hundred and forty-nine, for a total of two million, eight hundred and seventy thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three. And we have here that the open space continues to build a positive net balance. The supervisors, which we're going to discuss later, are working with the land conservancy and the land conservation advisory committee on two easements currently. And there may be more to come for the year, but I'm not sure.
Lisa, in the open space, what's the reason for this huge differential with the fee and lieu revenue?
Oh, for the budget?
Yeah, the budget in the current year.
The budget was for a project on McFarland Road. And they owe that money, but the supervisors had agreed they wouldn't pay that money until they got their first building permit fee. So that's why we didn't receive it in two thousand thirteen. We expect it in two thousand fourteen. This is the library fund. We received a hundred and fifty-four thousand, three hundred and seventy-four in library taxes. All of the library tax gets distributed to the library. At the end of the year, we had five thousand, six twenty-five, which came in in December and is being distributed to the library. So as of December two thousand thirteen, we had distributed a hundred and fifty thousand to the library. This is the state fund. This is the liquid fuels money that we received for the township public works and the road turnback money. So this year, we received two hundred and twenty-five thousand, four hundred and fifty-five dollars for liquid fuels. We received twenty-five thousand, two hundred for road turnback. And the expenditures this year, we spent fifteen thousand, nine hundred and seventy on line painting, thirty-nine thousand, four hundred and twelve on oil and chip, and a hundred and ninety-six thousand on paving. We spent more money on paving, but that was out of the general fund. This is only the state fund expenditures. So at the end of the year, we have a balance of two hundred and five dollars. This is the expense variances. As you, some of you may know, the business advisory committee created a budget overage policy, which was approved in October. So beginning in January, any expenditures over the budget amount of over ten thousand dollars or over ten percent, over five thousand or ten percent, the supervisors will have to approve. For example, we are going to go over our budget shortly because of the fuel used for the generators during the storm for the road crew. Because all the pump stations, the lights, the township building, the maintenance garage were all on generators during that whole time. So when we get close to that budget amount, we ask the supervisors to approve that budget overage. So here's a list of all the budget overages. For example, Penn's Manor Road Widening was a project, it was part of the Penn's Manor completion project, that the supervisors agreed to widen the road because it wasn't wide enough for two vehicles to get down the road. So the supervisors paid that, and it was not budgeted. Engineering services, which weren't budgeted, was for Marshall Bridge Road. We had an issue out there and for Penn's Manor. The community systems, we've had a lot of expense with community systems. With the Ashford Sewer System, we had a major repair at the Ashford Sewer System. We have the, one of, this is a revenue that we received that we didn't budget, which was a traffic signal contribution that a developer contributed for the traffic signal at the intersection of Rosedale and McFarland. So that money's there if the supervisors decide to make that a full traffic signal instead of a flashing signal. And building permits, the revenue for building permits increased this year. And the revenue for cable TV increased this year. That's based on what they charge everybody, Comcast and Verizon. And our liquid fuels was higher than we expected, but that's always based on what the state gives out that year. So during the fourth quarter, we made further changes to our charter accounts to continue the process for consolidating and proving clarity of reporting. The capital plan has been approved. We are working further with the fire companies to project out ten years for their needs. And also, you'll hear later that our engineer is going to do a roads management, study of the roads, and see what is needed for the roads and what repairs and what type of products we should be using for the roads. So that'll be part of the capital plan because then we'll be able to project out twenty years what roads will get what done to them and what costs they pay. All the technical issues in this room have finally been resolved. And we can now record our January fifteenth meetings on YouTube. This meeting will get up on YouTube as well. We now have six hundred and ten residents sign up for the Township E newsletter. And we appreciate everybody forwarding it to the residents who haven't signed up because we got a lot of people that signed up during the storm. The structural aspects of the new website have been completed, and the website has been populated with current website information. So we're doing a final review of the website before it goes live. And as I said, we had demo of the website next month. And additional meetings have been held with two fire companies with the intent to explore fire tax, which would be on verifiable data to make certain Kennedy Township residents only pay for their fair share. And on that, the other thing that the Kennedy Area Regional Planning is doing is they're working on capital costs and fire company needs as a region, serving them as a region. So that'll be something that's coming up as well. Any questions?
Yes, Lisa, Richard Goss, Chester County Press. Just on the twelve-month summary of expense variances, you listed office and a sixty-six thousand dollar increase of last year. What does office mean?
Wages.
Do the supervisors have questions or comments? Yes, John.
Has the board determined the real estate tax for two thousand fourteen?
Yes.
Is it the same as last year?
Two-tenths of a no.
That's the same.
Well, last year started out as four-tenths.
But it's modified.
And it's modified to two-tenths. So now it's two-tenths.
Thank you.
Are you new, John?
Yeah.
Thank you for keeping it.
Thank you. In the report, you, I noticed you published the expense variances when they were overages and the income variances when they were overages. Would it make sense to report the variances when they're under as well?
We can do that. Dale?
The road turnback, the twenty-five thousand dollars we got from the state, which road was that?
No, that's for roads that we received over the years. We haven't turned back any roads lately. We received, I think it's four hundred, or, no, four thousand dollars per road that's been turned back. But the last road that was turned back has been maybe twenty years. And so that's just a set fee that we receive every year.
What does fee and lieu mean?
It's a fee in lieu of land dedication. So a developer, if they don't want to donate land for open space, they have to pay a fee. And that fee can only be used for recreational purposes. So that's why it's categorized with the open space. It's not in the open space fund, in the open space account. It's just part of that because it can also be used for open space. It can be used for traffic signals, trails, recreation.
Do you have any more of the handouts?
I can give you mine. If there's no more back there.
Any other questions or comments?
Police expenditures have, over the last several years, have experienced a huge percentage increase each and every year. Now, you said this past year, two hundred thousand dollars plus is attributed to hiring a full-time officer and a vehicle. Two hundred thousand dollars for hiring one additional policeman and a vehicle. I'm wondering if it's possible to have a better breakdown?
Sure. The breakdown of each category is on the website.
Well, I didn't see it on the website for two thousand and fourteen, for two thousand and thirteen. I didn't see it for two thousand and thirteen.
It's on there. I can email it to you if you'd like.
Well, I can find it. I couldn't access it just now, but I couldn't find it. It is, huh?
It is on there. But I, if you'd like, I have your email. I can email it to you.
Okay, but since that is, seems to be a nagging, to my mind, seems to be a nagging item that shows big increases over budget, year after year after year. I'm wondering if that shouldn't be highlighted on our annual report, i.e., this, you know, handout, that everybody can see it physically and not have to go on.
I can do that if you would like it broken down. I can do that for the next report.
Thank you.
What's the police, over budget?
Yes.
I'm looking.
Well, and it's compared, and it was over budget, but it was also for comparing it for last year's.
Twenty-twelve.
Yeah. All right, I'm sorry, twenty-twelve, yeah.
You're right, okay, okay. Any other questions?
Well, the budget was two hundred and eighty thousand for police, right?
Yes, it was two hundred and eighty thousand, and the expenditures was three hundred and fifty-five thousand.
And in two thousand and twelve, they came in at a hundred and seventy-four, and the budget was one twenty-seven. So, I mean, there is a systemic difference between budget and reality in this one light item, line item every single year, it seems. That's my only comment, and that's why I think it's helpful to have a breakdown and a comparative breakdown. So it's not just, you know, one year, but you compare it to the other year, the prior year as well.
I can do that.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for?
How many full-time office staff in the township, just office?
How many full-time?
Office staff.
There's four full-time, then there's zoning officer, building inspector, part-time staff.
Thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I want to thank you for doing this. This is a substantial increase in transparency for the township this last year, what you have brought forth. And I thank you for that. Shows a great deal of effort. I also want to thank the BAC, the Business Advisory Committee, for having worked with Lisa in upgrading software and changing, as the notes show, there was a change in recording capabilities and a lot of different things that have made a big difference in making this information available. And I think that's a real, a real positive turn of events. So thank you to both. Lisa, you want to follow up with the Guthrie tribute?
Yes. I wanted to follow up on your note with the Business Advisory Committee. The Business Advisory Committee has been extremely helpful to me. In particular, Bill McLaughlin has helped me tremendously, and so has the Communications Committee because they've done a lot to help us. So thank you. Marion Guthrie, sometimes she's known as Polly Guthrie. She served on our Historic Commission for eighteen years. And she passed away on January fifteenth. She was ninety-four years old. And we wanted to give a little tribute to her. Unfortunately, her family chose not to attend, just because it's, you know, a very difficult time for them. But she was a beloved member of our community. She was an amazing artist, a mentor, a friend, and she worked tirelessly to preserve the township's history. Kennedy Township is doing this tribute tonight when the Chair of the Historic Commission will speak. But we will also plant a flowering, plant of some sort out back by the bench with a plaque with her name on it because she did love flowers. And she has also contributed many paintings to us here at the township. So she will be greatly missed by all of us. And Sarah Meadows of the Historic Commission is going to speak.
Hello, everybody. Our Historical Commission is here tonight to say goodbye to Marion Floyd Guthrie and to praise her and thank her. We've arranged a display of some of her work, and I hope that you'll be able to take a few moments after the meeting to take a look at all the things that she's done for our township. There's a wide variety of artwork, and it shows how talented she was in so many areas. Among her many accomplishments, Marion was responsible for the commission's program posters, the showcase displays, and well as numerous drawings and paintings which hang in the upstairs history room. She was active in many projects for the Historical Commission and was always ready to share her impressive knowledge of the township. She was able to further the goals of our commission through her artistic talents. This watercolor, which Marion did of the township building, hangs in the main floor lobby area. And we're going to have a small brass plaque made up that identifies Marion as the artist and notes some of her accomplishments. Serving together on the Historical Commission, we got to know Marion very well, and we came to depend on her hard work and her willingness to always cheerfully pitch in and help whenever we will, whatever, whatever we were working on. We counted her as a good friend and will cherish our memories of her, and we will miss her very much.
Thank you, Sarah. Old business, there are two things that are old business, but they've been pretty much dealt with in the manager's report. That is the gun ordinance and the housing ordinance. The gun, both of them are at various stages of being with council, being reviewed. So there will be more about both of those ordinances in the next meetings. I do want to take a moment to thank both Marla Palmer and John Hayes. Marla and her group with the Planning Commission in reviewing the housing ordinance, and John and his group on the Planning Commission for working on the gun ordinance. And the work that they did is very helpful to the supervisors, and the commitment of the Planning Commission in following up on both of these items has been very helpful. And supervisors are in great appreciation of their work. I don't believe there's anything else as far as old business is concerned. Okay, so let's go to new business. We're changing things around a little bit here. We're paying bills at the beginning of new business rather than after, or adjourned. So, may we have a?
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed, so we'll pay the bills. Thank you.
We did review them last week.
They were circulated, and we've had a chance to review them. Okay. Brandywine Valley Scenic Byway Commission appointment. This is a little bit confusing. At our organizational meeting, we appointed two members as commissioners to the Brandywine Valley Scenic Byway Commission, Margot Taylor and John Hadrick. Somehow, there was a confusion of communication. Tom Nail had been serving for a number of years as a commissioner on that commission, and somehow, we were led to believe he wasn't interested in staying in that role. Turns out that he was interested in staying in that role. So, we can add him to it, except that we learned tonight that there can only be two commissioners, and we have two commissioners now. So, we need to make a little bit of an adjustment as to who is serving as a commissioner on the Brandywine Valley Scenic Byway Commission. So, Margot will remain a member of the commission but not be an actual commissioner. Tom Nail will be appointed to take her place as a commissioner, and we need to amend John Hadrick's term, because as we learned tonight, it's supposed to be a two-year term, not a one-year term. So, I'm looking for a motion from the other supervisors that will appoint Tom as a commissioner for one year and amend John's.
Should she have to one year or two years longer?
Tom should be one.
Tom just one, okay.
John should be two.
And the reason for that is because the goal of changing from one year to two-year was to get.
Stagger.
A stagger effect.
Okay.
So, John will be in for two years, Tom will be in one, and next year, Tom will roll for two years, and then we'll be in a good staggered role from that point on. So, I'm looking for a one-year appointment motion for Tom to amend John's to two years, and I don't think we have to do anything for Margot. Okay.
I move what you said.
Thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
Both, no? Thank you. It's so adopted. Okay, Tom, John?
Thank you.
Good. And thank you both for your many years of commitment to this project. It's important. Good. We have the need to release liens for Penns Manor taxes. Would you like to address that for us?
Sure. As I stated earlier, the Penns Manor development was completed by the township. The Penns Manor homeowners found out that the developer did not pay the taxes on the open space. So, they have asked that the township relieve them of the amount owed to Kennet Township for real estate taxes. The total amount at the end of 2013 was $57.46. So, we need an official vote from the supervisors that they would approve relieving Penns Manor Homeowners Association from paying that tax.
May I suggest that council had suggested to me before the meeting that the language be to exonerate and release. Is that right, Dave?
Correct.
Okay. That we exonerate and release the real estate tax liens on the six open space parcels in the Penns Manor community.
Given what they've been through, that seems pretty reasonable. So, I'd like to make that motion.
Thank you.
Second question, though. How about future? Don't we have to do this forever?
No.
Make them tax-free from now on?
Well, that, we don't do that. That automatically happens in the open space. Before it was dedicated as open space, there were taxes.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Both? It's adopted. Thank you. Okay, so the next thing we have is a carryover from, I'm sorry, yes.
Not a problem. Nigel Weiss, President, Penns Manor Homeowners Association. I just want to thank the board of supervisors for approving that. As you said, Mr. Left, we've been through a lot with the developer and walking away. We really appreciate the support. And if I may, I'd also like to, both on behalf of the board and all 144 homes, especially thank Lisa for her follow-through on the seizing of escrow funds. Thank you for awarding those contracts, and really appreciate that. It's been a long road for those of us on the board that have been there for the last few years, and we know the challenge for you as well. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, and thanks for being here to work with us. We have two ordinances that are a carryover from even those under new business. We started the discussion of this last month. One is Ordinance 213 for the repealing of Ordinance 190, and Ordinance 214, which is for the repealing of Ordinance 102. Now, Ordinance 190 was adopted in 2010 to create a township conservation group. Ordinance 102 was an enabling ordinance adopted in 1995 in relation to the Kennet Conservancy. And it presumed that there was a need for having that relationship in order to be able to work with Kennet on that. It turns out that we've been working with lots of, or several other conservancy groups without the necessity of having such an ordinance. So, the concern of this board has been, are these two ordinances relevant at this point, whether we should keep them in place?
Shall we consider the first one? Do them one at a time?
So, that's Ordinance 213.
Right.
Addressing Ordinance 190.
Right.
Sure.
And my understanding is that the township is creating its own land conservancy group. Correct?
May I have a motion for? Can we discuss the motion?
I'd like to move to adopt Ordinance 213.
Okay.
Is there a second?
No.
I'll second it. Three and a second, okay. All right, so now, let's discuss it.
So, my understanding is that Ordinance 190, the township is establishing its own land conservancy agency.
It can establish. It doesn't establish one.
Doesn't establish one.
It gives it the authority.
It gives the authority to establish.
Why would the township want to do that?
Well, it's an alternative to others using other facilities. I don't see any harm in this ordinance. Unless we vote to actually do it, it will never take effect.
Right. Well, I mean, if the township establishes its own land conservancy, we have to fund it, we have to hire people, we have to establish it, we have to.
That's correct.
...more than we've got several land agencies that we've worked for and worked with and are working with. So, I don't particularly see an advantage in duplicating resources that are already being done.
Okay. It's been moved, it's been seconded.
Any other comments from the audience?
Do you really need it?
No, that's why we're going to take it off the book.
Right. Exactly. Move and second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No opposed?
I just don't see why we're bothering, really. Unless we do something, if nothing happens.
All right. Okay. Same issue regarding Ordinance 214 repealing Ordinance 102, which is the 1995 ordinance. Is there a motion to address this?
I think we should move to address.
We should move to adopt it.
Adopt it.
Okay. Second?
No.
Yes, I'll second.
Now, we can have the discussion.
Now, we can have the discussion.
So, my understanding is that this ordinance, 102, was established to establish the, I'm not going to use the right name, but the group that is currently known as the Land Conservancy of Southern Chester County. And if anyone who has land under that, if you go around the township and you take a picture of it, you see these sort of blue green signs that are oval-shaped, and under it says the Land Conservancy for Southern Chester County, and it says this land is under permanent conservation easement. That group is not impacted by this ordinance. I mean, that's a separate entity. It doesn't get changed. That's my understanding. Is that correct?
It's correct.
This actually creates a original.
Right, right.
If I may, your ordinance did not create anything. The ordinance authorized township to support the, what was then the Kennet Township Land Trust. It authorized the township to enter into contracts with it, expend funds to support it, and provide professional support for the Kennet Township Land Trust. It gave authority to do all those things. It did not mandate any of that, nor did it create anything regarding a land trust.
So, it didn't create a legal entity.
Correct.
Now, if I may ask, does it, did it address anything that could not be otherwise done if it did not exist? In other words, is it possible for the township to work with the Kennet Land Trust, even if that does not exist?
And we can still add our new agreements and donate?
Of course, absolutely. You don't need an ordinance to work with land conservancies, land trusts, whoever they may be. You don't need an ordinance authorizing you to cooperate with them. You can do that by motion of the Board of Supervisors.
Is there anything else that Richard, you wanted to add?
So, is there any need to keep it on the books? Once again, it's just sort of good housekeeping, clearing things out. Does anyone have any concerns? We're going to be working with the land trust. You can hear a lot more tonight about that. We can fund land trusts if we want to electively. I don't, I wasn't there at the time when it was created, but, you know, it's got things started and got things rolling, but things are now rolling, and I don't know if it's needed.
Bob, did you have any comments additionally?
No.
Okay. Well, I think that it makes sense to clear up any of the confusion of relationships that have come and gone and no longer exist in the same fashion, particularly when the legislation, the ordinances have no significance as far as being able to work or not work. I'm going to call for a vote only on the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Not opposed. So, adopted. Thank you all. We charged through there, I'm sorry. Were there any questions with the group as to why we were doing it?
Richard actually asked that.
Yes.
Oh, sorry. Is that your bracket?
No, it's fine, fine. I'm sorry.
We had a lot of discussion at the last meeting before this.
Vice Chairman Left, just to, in layman's terms, just cutting it down to its core here, how does this benefit, the repeal of these two ordinances, how does this benefit the township in terms of future open space easements, et cetera, within the township law?
Yeah, I mean, to me, it just cleans up how the township's going to interact. It'll interact with all land trusts evenly. I think that's what we intend to do. I think, you know, if there's one that was somehow created or partly on the books with the township, some groups may or may not be concerned about that. So, from my point of view, this just removes something that isn't needed, and it cleans up our ordinances also. So, it makes it easier to find other ordinances, just in terms of other things which are sometimes difficult in the township. To me, it's just also the housecleaning part.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is funding letters for easements, and this was what Lisa was suggesting was going to be coming up when she spoke about the land trust.
So, the supervisors are working with the Land Conservancy of Southern Chester County and the Land Conservation Advisory Committee on two easements in the township. Tonight, the supervisors will vote on signing and approving funding letters, so that they will agree to provide matching grants, or matching funds for the grants that the Land Conservancy is applying for, for the two easements. One easement contains 35 acres, and the other one contains 36.86 acres. And both of the easements are a linkage to conserve lands in the township, so they're very important properties to conserve. So, what we ask right now is if you guys will take a vote on signing these letters so that the Land Conservancy can continue to apply for the grants for the easements. If the Land Conservancy gets the grants, then the supervisors will vote on the funding amounts at a future date.
I think it's important to understand that, as Lisa has suggested, this is the first time in my experience that the township has worked for funding an easement by looking to the county for assistance in the purchase of conservation easement rights. The last couple of years, that has not occurred. This is coming up now, because the deadline is in about a week to file the applications with the county. And so, there's been a strong effort on the part of two organizations, one of which is the Land Conservancy, who has, which has been working with the landowners in discussing these various parcels, and doing a lot of, a lot of work under tight constraints to have the properties properly vetted out to have a funding application filed. The other group is the Land Conservancy, the Land Conservation Advisory Committee, the LCAC. That has just been reconstituted this year, and in the face of this time constraint, they came together, people that are new to the whole process, and took over the responsibilities of doing what the LCAC does, which is to review the property and present it ultimately to the supervisors for consideration for conservation easements. And so, they also have put in, in the middle of snowstorms, walking the properties to look at them, meeting and talking through. And this is with, at the same time, beginning to put together a new process, a revised and updated process for doing this kind of work. So, I want to personally thank both organizations for the work that they have put in in the last month, so that these two funding le- last month, so that these two, um, funding letters can be presented to us and in front of you tonight. It's been a very rewarding to experience, to be able to work with both of them in that. So, having said all that, my other motion, Lisa. I move, we approve the funding letter.
A second.
Thank you. There's some hands going up. Before we get to the questions, are there any comments, um, from the, from the board?
Yeah, no, I, I think it's a good thing to do with work, to work with groups that can effectively double our, uh, our money that we have for preserving open space land in the township.
Yes, and that's the significance of going to the county for support, is it effectively doubles the amount of money available to do the job that needs to be done. So, we're going to look at questions, yes, sir?
Tell us where the properties are and how they fit into the conservancy plan.
Um, at this stage, I can't tell you the exact properties. I can tell you about it enough that you could probably figure out where they are, but there's, it, it remains a confidential, um, issue until it finally comes up for the actual approval of funding. At that point, then, all the details are on the table. Uh, the one property is on Bayard in the area of Old Kennet Road, and the other one is on...
Burt Mill.
Burt Mill. Burt Mill. Burt Mill. The one is, um, it's, um, just short of 37 acres, and the other one is 35 acres.
And they have, they're on areas, I think, that have been identified for EDUs, or, uh, and also for potential future trade leases?
Yes.
They connect to other properties.
Right, so, I mean, they're, they're...
That are already eased.
So, they're nice key pieces to have.
And, and so, my question about the plan of it, so it includes some, eventually some trail opportunities?
Yes, trails are part of the consideration.
Trail easements.
Trail easements, yes. Yes. Yes, sir.
Yeah, Bob Wisterman and our planning commission. My question goes back to when we were short on EDUs, and we were looking at alternatives for wastewater management, and one of those alternatives was either spray or drip irrigation. Now, not knowing where these properties are, and maybe they're not suitable specifically for that anyway, but are we considering that when we set aside these open spaces? Because every time we remove more than 20 acres, we lose the opportunity to utilize them economically as potential spray or drip fields.
These two properties are not, these two properties would not be viable for spray fields.
Because when I did my research on this years ago, the current, these lands that are set aside, we cannot use them for spray irrigation or drip, is that true?
The county does not allow you to use the conserved lands to basically foster development off the land by using them for septic, or, so no, in the county grants, you can't.
The other thing is, it's the best of my knowledge, and if I can confirm this for me, is that was never one of the considerations in the negotiation.
No.
To, to, assuming that we could do it, and apparently can't, but assuming we could, we'd have to go back and completely renegotiate it.
Well, what that forces us to do in the future, if we don't have these lands available for such application, is to expand the burrow plant and continue to put sewage treated, nonetheless, into the red clay.
Well, um, to be perfectly candid with you, I don't know what our options are on the sewer question. There are major questions in the area of sewers for the township. Um, and I refer you to my comments, um, at the, at the organizational meeting, my, my state of the township comments. Um, the fact is that we are in the middle of evaluating what our specific needs are in the area of sewers, that has not been completed, it will be very, very shortly. And this year, we will begin to address in a very meaningful way what our needs are in the area of sewers and how we're going to pay for them. And so, your comments, although appreciated now, will probably be even more significant in another six months or less.
Yeah, my, my only point is to make sure we don't forget it. I mean, maybe, it can't be...
We won't forget it, so...
But it seems counterintuitive from a, from a, from a conservation standpoint, to set aside something and then make it worse somewhere else.
Right.
Can I just add to that?
Sure.
Basically, what you would do and what other townships do when they want spray irrigation is they purchase land outright. You don't have a, you don't usually have a landowner living there that then has spray irrigation in their front yard. So, it's really a matter of looking at land that's more desirable or not desirable for conservation, but for open space for spray irrigation.
Right, and so my point goes back to the point, every time we remove land to a con, to conservation, we remove it from an outright purchase to do spray irrigation, if it would have been otherwise suitable for it.
Right.
And obviously, that's way beyond our imagination right now, where we're at in planning such a thing, but someday, we may be back up against that wall, that we have to look at, how do we handle the new development that comes in, and how do we handle them if they're going to be placed on the burrow system? I know we have all these hodgepodge systems that are another story to begin with, and some of those may end up, end, end up with the burrow too somehow, someday, who knows? There'll be engineers that will tell us that.
Scouting.
But my main point is, I just want to make sure that the land, the, the thought process through easements, and maybe that is the answer, do we ease it, or do we just outright buy it? You know, if it's suitable for it, that's all.
Yeah. I think, Lisa, you might have addressed it where the deed art not areas...
It sounded like they were, but it were...
They're, they're not near anywhere that that could be done.
And, um, I also want to call to your attention, if you were to look down on the agenda, under Remington Beach Project Proposal, one of those projects is, deals specifically with sewer needs and alternatives. So, it's, it's here, it's alive, and it's snapping at various parts of our appendages. But it's probably not appropriate at this particular point in the agenda. Yes, sir?
Can you divulge how much the funding is, or is that confidential as well?
I couldn't hear you, I'm sorry.
Can you divulge how much the funding is, or is that confidential?
That's confidential at this point, because it's not finalized to having a signature on an agreement of sale or contract.
Is there money in the budget for that every year?
Oh, yes. I think that, that, that was the implication of, for what Lisa said when she gave the, uh, the, the budget report, and she made reference to 2,009 or 2,008 of open space property that has continued, not property, uh, funds, that has continued to appreciate every year, uh, and she said that we're working on a couple of different easements that will dig into that, but it will fit, it will not make that gross a dent in the, in that model particularly if we have the county joining us. Yes, John?
Our, I, I assume from the nature of the discussion that this is a 50-50 match, township and the county?
That's what the, um, the letters do, yes.
And, uh, will these applications that are filed with the county, are they, is that public record, or no?
I would think that at some point it would be, it would be right to know, but, um, I think at this point, it's not.
Probably not totally approved, it's kind of...
Okay.
Yeah.
One last question, is the nature of the easement essentially just purchasing development rights, so there'll be no building on these properties?
Right.
That's it?
Yes.
Trails. That and trails.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I, I assume that there's actually realist, there's property buildings on these, the acreage now.
On one property, or, yeah, both of them.
Both of them, huh?
Yeah.
Yes, sir?
On the easement, what about the mineral rights? Now, I know there is going to be fracking in this area, but, but it is a big deal in the state. And is that worth addressing or not?
Frankly, I haven't looked at the, um, the deed, the proposed deed and the, the agreement and whatnot. My recollection is, in this part of the state, if you were up in Scranton, you'd have a very different kind of deed arrangement. In this part of the state, as far as I know, the mineral rights go with whatever is being sold.
That's right, that's right, but an easement is a little, an easement, if you're talking about an easement, you're talking about no building, you, you might also address mineral rights as well on an easement. Perhaps, now, I'm not a lawyer, but I think it's worth looking at it, you will make your decision.
I'm assuming that...
It's addressed in the conservation easements, which will then be renegotiated, if and when the funding is all in place.
Good, okay. Yes, sir, John?
Hi, Scott. Um, with these easement discussions, everybody likes trails, I like trails, I love them.
Good.
But, um, are, are the consideration of trails included in these easements a secondary part to the effort to acquire the easement in the first place? In other words, does acquiring the easement take precedent over, an easement without a trail is darn near as good as an easement with a trail? Would you agree with that?
No, it depends on what your goal is, and this township has taken the position, as far as I'm aware, uh, that, that we are very much in favor of trails, and so we have...
That's a great idea.
...one or two exceptions in the last two years. Uh, we've always, uh, supported taking trails, and the whole goal has, one of the whole goals, strongly committed, it's even in the comprehension, a comprehensive plan, uh, is to have a network of trails that is laid down over the, the, um, the landscape of the township. And so, that's one of the reasons why this isn't attractive, these two properties are attractive, because they, they fit within the lines of existing trails and will help to connect them to continue the flow of public trails.
Uh-huh, that's great, that's neat, but would you, would you, if the owner was not interested in a trail, would you still pursue an easement?
Well, so far, the negotiation has been to include trails. So, I'm...
You're kind of not answering my question, but...
So, I can answer that question. So, we have a lot of land that's potentially under, that potentially could go under easement, and that takes an awful lot of money, so we have to prioritize which ones we want to do. We want ones that will benefit all residents, or as many residents as possible, and that also includes potential trail easements. I think we'd consider lands that don't have trail easements on it, but presumably, the price the township would pay for that would be less. Um, now, where the priority fits depends on when lands come up for potential easement, and, um, that's always hard to tell, when that's going to happen. These two are before us, and we think they're attractive for, for those reasons, um, but, you know, and that's why we're going to go for them.
Oh, that, that's great.
Yeah.
I'm not quite getting a straight answer.
When you have trails, how do you access them without parking areas and maintenance and patrols and markings and the kind of stuff? I, I can't name where there's a public trail in Kennet Township. I've looked here 28 years.
Can I answer that? Generally, the parking areas are, are on our nature preserves, but as this 10-mile loop trail, the red clay greenway is being developed, it's going in and out of the burrow, there's already a designated trailhead over near the parish, um, Kennet Ball Fields. Um, they're, they're spart, they're, or on our conserved land, they're already there. We're not going to put a trail on a, on a, on a landowner's property and then have a parking area in their backyard. It's just that they're coming through, accessing from somewhere else.
Are you maintaining them?
Yes, of course.
Okay. No, I agree with him, I mean, my, my sons ran across country and had to drive to Wilmington to find trails to run, um, because they weren't that well advertised, they weren't that developed in Kennet Township, and it was one of the reasons why I wanted to be supervisor, to allow more of these things to happen.
Good.
So, thanks for your question, and we'll try to have more advertisements about where the trails are, when we get more of them, there'll be able to be more, um, information about them and make them more available to residents.
Cool.
Are there any other questions or comments relative to this?
Can, can I just say one thing that...
Yes, thank you.
Can, generally, just to answer his question as well, for future consideration, a lot of times, the state and county are governmental entities, when they give grant funding for conservation easements, the county does require public access, so that's something to consider, if you want to leverage funds. State is becoming more of a case-by-case basis, and this township has always been err on the side of trails if the landowner wants them, if not, like you said, Richard, there's priority and the, the costs associated would be different.
Okay. Question's been called, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes. Thank you, and thank you for all of your, your, um, attention and your important questions. It was a very helpful discussion. The next item is George Goan.
Hi there.
Hi, I'm George Goan.
Yes.
Nice to see you.
Welcome. I think you had some questions or some concerns regarding...
You can address this, I've been cited for shooting my shotgun in my backyard, which I've done for 26 years with birdshot, and, um, I, it blew my mind that it was against the law, but it is, you've enacted Ordinance 212, which immediately precedes 213 and 214, and it's a very flawed ordinance, and you've addressed this by saying you're rewriting it. Um, I don't know what the nature of your changes are, but I would like to again be able to shoot shotguns in my backyard with birdshot up into the trees, which I've done for 26 years, and has been legal in those townships since it was founded. Um, they're not bullets, it's not dangerous to people. I have the citation with birdshot taped to it, if you would like to see the size of birdshot. It's about the size of grains of salt, you know, but, here, I'll just pass it around. But thank you for your time and attention. We were further shut down when we went to a much larger property with my friend Mark, and, uh, three fathers and five kids were prevented from shooting, um, at Christmas, which we've done for many years. So, I thank you.
Yes, thank you.
I have the same opinion as George does as well. Uh, when I found out about this, uh, I didn't know anything about it as well, I have a property, and, uh, we have been shooting on shotguns for the last few years, and, uh, we have a big property that we think is clearly large enough to be able to shoot shotguns. Uh, so, I just want to be aware of any changes that are, hopefully, will occur with this, um, and I'd like to be a part of it to, to, to represent, you know, a change.
Thank you.
Would you tell us your name, please, so we have it in the minutes correctly?
It's Jamie Germain.
Thank you, okay.
I have a question. When you're talking about shooting, are you, are you hunting, or are you just shooting targets, or, what kind of shooting are you doing?
Clay pigeons, we, we have, we have a machine that throws them to the exact same place every time.
As well as men.
Which is why, I don't really shoot, it's boring, but my kids think it's a blast.
Is that traps, is that...
Yes.
It's trap.
It's, the same machine could be used for both purposes, that's the format of where the target is, skeet comes across, trap goes straight out. I'm doing the bunny slope of shotgun shooting, a very low load, birdshot, straight up into an oak tree, uh, to the same spot every time, and the kids will come out and do that for 45 minutes and have a great time. Yeah, which we do maybe 10 times a year.
Thank you, is your question answered?
Yes, um, maybe one of the problems is just the time of day that you're doing it?
Two in the afternoon.
You're shooting something that's the size of rice or something, and that's...
Smaller.
Smaller than rice. But isn't that also possible to get, um, buckshot and...
Oh, yeah.
And other things like that?
That's dangerous as all get out.
Yeah.
I mean, the deer hunters are using it.
Yeah, so, um, is it your suggestion that the ordinance, in addressing this concern, should be addressing it in terms of, of the, of the load, or of the...
Simply the word birdshot will suffice. Birdshot is, is defined as the much smaller load, um, and, uh, I put in my email to you, um, you know, just add to the exemptions and exceptions section, and a line item C, shotguns firing birdshot, um, which would allay my concern.
And/or, uh, amount of property you're shooting on, and the closest home?
I'm sorry, the size of the property?
Correct.
Yeah. Okay.
My name is Richard Kellerman, I live at 256 Old Kennet Road. I'd like the, um, subject broadened to sidearms, I don't shoot shotguns, I shoot 22, 38, 45. I live on 10 and a half acres, I couldn't kill somebody if I tried to, I have a half-inch steel plate backstop.
Good job.
I'm very willing to abide by certain hours, I don't shoot in the middle of the night, but... I don't shoot in the middle of the night, but I'd like to be able to continue to just target. I shoot a bit of paint.
So your concern is...
Well, I'm breaking the law if I do it now. That's my concern.
No.
There's a backstop, and so don't you meet the standard if you're meeting an NRA standard backstop?
Well, I've got to find out by the standard.
Yeah.
But my point was, I just would like the ordinance not to be simply directed at shotguns and more in favor of them too, but there's other kinds of guns that we... Some of us harmlessly shoot, so...
Yes, thank you.
Which has been our property right for 300-plus years.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I think that the point is the harmlessly shoot part.
Absolutely.
I think that's what the supervisors had intended by this ordinance.
Yeah.
And so we're taking a closer look at it with different counsel.
The bad guys aren't going to show up at the meeting and say hi.
There was one thing in that ordinance that I had kind of objected to before the ordinance was passed that didn't seem to get addressed properly, and that is that I believe there's still a line in the ordinance that says you cannot fire within 100 yards of your own property line. No, that's related to the PA hunting rules of not firing within 150 yards of a building without their permission. It's really arbitrary to say that you must be more than 100 yards away from your property line in order to shoot something.
Especially in direction, too.
Exactly. I mean, if I'm... First of all, if I have a property that's 3,000 yards long and 199 yards wide, I'll never be able to shoot on my property. The other thing is that if you have a backstop, you know, in the middle of your 10 acres, and he happens to stand that 99 yards in order to shoot at the backstop that's in the middle of his property, then he's... Then it's not legal for him. That's ridiculous. That's just a very arbitrary line and should be excised.
Counsel is taking notes to guide us in how we can revise the language, if at all, taking into consideration the concerns that are being expressed. The basic concerns, I had not yet heard anybody say that the safety concerns are not legitimate. The question is, how do we work it out so that it's practical and can be worked maintaining the concern for safety? So that's what we're continuing to address.
But you have some of the same issues. I mean, hunting is exempted from the ordinance, but you've got to have someone shooting on the edge of a property line, and potentially a more dangerous situation than shooting clay pigeons.
Right. And if I want to shoot a deer in my backyard, I'm allowed to be anywhere.
Well, there are statutory regulations that define when and how you can hunt, and that's clearly a state area of responsibility. So we're not stepping on that area, and if the state has not done it with grace...
To heaven.
That's... We're left with the pieces, but we're trying to do what we're trying to do with grace.
Yeah.
How complicated it is, because there are lots of rights, both the owner's interest as well as the neighbors and those that are downrange from bullets as opposed to rights that in pressure will affect. But bullets, whether they're 22, 38s, 45s...
Completely different thing.
Pistol or whatever, they can carry a long way and so have a big impact.
Like a mile. Agreed. Birdshot, like 40 yards.
Right. Your point is acknowledged. Any other comments or questions about it?
Thank you.
We certainly will pay close attention to the issues that are being raised, and it will become a matter of public discussion as we go forward with it. So bring it up as you go along, but probably within the next month, we'll have another draft that will be addressing it.
Thank you.
And thank you. Thank you.
I've got a lead question. Thank you very much.
Yes. Are we continuing to enforce the current ordinance as stated? As far as I know, we are.
Yes, except certain provisions of it, we can't. For example, the NRA backstop. Which backstop? Understood on which one applies where? That's the biggest part we have. The other part we have, who nobody mentioned here either, is residents competing about the noise of gunshot. That also was an issue that you brought up when we were in the past. But the ordinance is, we needed something because there were certain individuals shouldn't have been shooting where they were, and they've already been cited. That's why we needed some ordinance in effect, but there's other things also to consider. As you said, it's very complicated. You read that thing and you re-provision of it. You have the state saying we can't restrict gunfire, yet we are able to under certain provisions. So as you know, you control it, but I think it still needs conversation and rather than to have the other side of the issue.
Clearly, when I shoot, somebody showed up, took a picture of me, and forwarded it to the police, and I don't have a backstop. A backstop's not physically possible for birdshot shooting here. The NRA, I have an email from, I believe, I forwarded it to you, saying there is no backstop for birdshot. It's a different thing.
I understand.
So if the... Your thoughts?
Thank you. Was there a comment back there?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Remington Beach Project Proposals.
So we have seven proposals from our engineering firm, and I'm going to briefly describe each proposal, and one of the proposals we're going to discuss with our engineer and with our roadmaster here. So I'm just going to describe them first, and then we'll discuss it. So the first proposal is for feasibility study for Chammler Mill Bridge, which would explore the options to open the bridge, either as one-lane vehicle bridge, two-lane vehicle bridge, or pedestrian bridge only. And the cost of that proposal is $10,300. Supervisors want to get this study done, and then they plan to have a public meeting for all the residents for the bridge. The second proposal is...
Excuse me for interrupting. Shall we do them one at a time?
If you'd like to.
Put them all on the table, and then we'll see if we can do it as a lump or whether you have to do it individually. Do we want to do it as individually or do we want to do it as a lump?
Well, why don't you read them all, and then we'll see what...
Okay.
The second one is the physical needs assessment for the township municipal building, Public Works Building in Polbonne. They will do a general assessment, provide visual inspection of the accessible areas of the building, identify potential sources of water leaks or moisture penetration, identify structural deficiencies, evaluate the windows and flashing around the windows and the walls, provide recommendations for repair or improvement to correct the deficiencies, an HBAC assessment and an energy audit for a cost of $13,844. The next proposal is for our stormwater management ordinance update and MS4 services. This is something that we were already starting to work on and were required to do. This will include... For our MS4 will be public education and outreach, public involvement and participation, illicit discharge detection and elimination, construction stormwater runoff management, post-construction stormwater runoff management, and pollution prevention and good housekeeping for municipal operations and maintenance. The MS4 program is mandated by the state, and we're required to follow all their regulations. The stormwater ordinance update is an ordinance that the state requires us to adopt, so they will get the ordinance drafted for us to review and hopefully get adopted as soon as possible. And the amount for that is $12,566. The next proposal is for our 2013 Annual Chapter 94 Report, which is our sewer report. That is a report that we are required to file every year with the EP. The cost of that report is $2,466. The next proposal, which is something else that we were beginning to update, is for the sanitary sewer rules and regulations update. We are required to have rules and regulations for sanitary sewer installations, and ours is out of date, so this will bring the rules and regulations up to date, and the cost is $8,392. The next proposal is for sanitary sewer future planning study, and this proposal will look at the capital funding, the operating costs, rate impacts, for user fee projections. This is to determine if we're charging the proper amount. And that is a total of $25,276. The... And then the next one is for our pavement management system. And they'll do a roadway survey, which will produce a program for the township. What we're going to do for each road, whether we're going to pave it, seal coat it, mill it, resurface, reconstruct the roadway, and then we'll have it projected out at least 20 years. And then we'll have a schedule for when we do each road and the project for that road. And the cost for that is $18,520.
Lisa, my correction, remembering that each of these has been budgeted and that these proposals are all within the respective budgeted amounts.
The only... There are three that are not budgeted. All of the sewer proposals have been budgeted. The Chammler Mill Bridge feasibility study, the physical needs assessment, and the pavement management system have not been budgeted. So if you agree to proceed with those proposals, we would also need to approve a budget overage for the engineering budget of $45,000.
Can I ask you the...
May we have a motion first?
Oh, okay.
The motion being to adopt resolution to enter into these proposals with the engineering firm.
So moved?
Okay. Second? Okay.
So Lisa, the ones that are sewer, sanitary, and sewer plans, are those coming out of the general fund budget or from the sewer?
Sewer plan.
They're coming out of the sewer plan.
Yes.
And so then, all the ones that are addition levels are the Chammler Mill Bridge, municipal needs assessments. Chammler Mill Bridge has been closed for over two years and had restrictions prior, and so it'd be useful to get that project moving forward with actual some input. And you may hear from our engineer, but they were chosen because they have a number of possibilities that they can explore, and they do basic engineering, but also traffic, which is a concern of the county and the area. The municipal needs assessment is to figure out what the township might need over the next 10 or 20 years, which seems like a good thing to figure out. And the last one, the pavement management, would be how best can we try to maintain our roads because we're having, as compared to 20 years ago, maybe 20 years in the future, we're having a different traffic pattern, different usage and the like. And those are my perceptions of the topic.
Roger, would you like to give your opinion on the pavement management system?
The system's been around for quite a few years now, but tend to those that have taken some courses over the past, trying to recognize alligatoring, problem areas, basically figuring how to not bandy the top, which is basically what we try to do, play in the future. I think it's a pretty good system.
It's more of a proactive approach than managing the roadways and then just patching things as they break and being reactive. So you measure all your roads, the lengths, width, and you rank them as far as what kind of shape you're in.
Do I need to introduce yourself to the audience?
I'm sorry. Tom Wilks from Remington, American Beach, civil engineer. So essentially, what you're doing is identifying all your roads, ranking the quality of the roads, creating an inventory of those, and then you can prioritize how good or bad the shades of roads, and then you want to... How much you're going to fund, and then project the fund each year to fix the worst roads first, possibly or most likely. But then you have a plan moving forward, so it could be a five-year plan, a 10-year plan, a 20-year plan. But it really is a planning tool, and then that you can use to allocate funding depending on getting the kind of budget constraints you have, so...
And will we be able to update that tool to...
Oh, absolutely. As repair the worst roads, that of course all move to the bottom of the priority list. And then you can also seal the roads at certain intervals to prolong the paving, the repaving, depending on what you try to do to repair the road. There's different ways of, you know, not all roads need to be ripped out and replaced if built from scratch. You can just mill an overlay, or you could seal coat, and they'll have cost consequences, but it's really a budgeting tool, it's an inventory and a ranking tool. And it's all kind of built together so that when you have all those inputs, it becomes obvious which roads need to be maintained first and which ones not so much. Of course, we rely on Roger's knowledge as well, being the roadmaster. That's kind of what it is. It's like a master tool essentially of your road system.
More of a one-off expense, or is there ongoing expenses involved with this tool?
It would be an annual budget for road maintenance, for road repairs.
Right. But I meant in terms of the engineering aspect, in terms of, so now we do $800,000 for the pavement management, a sort of assessment.
Right, right.
Is there yearly assessments? Is there yearly fee that goes, that comes along?
Well, if the township needed help looking at our plans for hiring contractors and bidding out the projects, that's a service that we offer as well.
Right. That's something else, but in terms of ongoing, taking a look at it within two to five years, it's something that we can do on our own.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Once you've measured the quantity, so you have, you know, three miles of road, and it's 24 feet wide, and you need to mill off two inches and re-pave it with two inches, that's a fixed cost or a cost I could give you today, and how we... It might have to be adjusted incrementally for inflation, but perhaps if you're going to implement it five years from now, but essentially you would have that number, that cost actually already prepared as part of this. So you have the cost.
So we can make adjustments later?
Right.
Roger, do you have a view as to whether this would be helpful to the work you have to do or not?
I think the way the township grows as in volume of traffic, it's... Time has come probably for better management than what we, you know, have done in the past, because we never had the volume of traffic we have now or the amount of weight that we have that goes through our township. The problem is, a lot of the roads, when we do the assessments on them, once we get our traffic counts, which we do our traffic counts with our encounters and stuff, so that will help in this system. A lot of it's going to be major face repair, like we've done on the last couple roads, our main thru fairs that are handling the truck traffic. And I mean, that's where you eat a lot of volume. So, yeah, I think a rule that fits in the law.
Thank you. Yes, John?
On the subject of stormwater management, both for the engineer and the solicitor, I think there's a major problem we've seen through the planning commission. That is, many of these existing stormwater basin systems are not being maintained and do not function to manage stormwater.
I may just add to that for you, John. We had a meeting with previous engineer and with the state authorities, and they wanted us to identify where our various basins were, and we could find them.
Well, they also want us to go onto private property and maintain them.
That's the legal issue that I think the township is going to have to find a solution because with these homeowners associations, we are unable to enforce proper maintenance of these very critical systems for flooding in township and downstream.
If the homeowners associations are responsible, then the township should enforce proper If the homeowners associations are responsible, then the township should enforce property maintenance code against homeowners associations to require them to do it, or do it and lean the properties.
I think in the past, we've thrown up our hands, and I don't think that's a good solution.
Yeah. But you also have to look and see who's responsible, basin by basin. You can't just say every basin is township responsibility or homeowners.
No, it's mostly the homeowners, and that's where the problems are. Because they're in fact defeating the purpose of the stormwater system because they like green grass instead of water.
Right. Okay. But there should be township standards for basins, how they need to be maintained. And I know in recent years, there have been new and different theories about how to maintain basins, and some, and Tom will correct me if I'm wrong, are allowing more growth to occur within basins. And just because you're not mowing a basin down to the ground and keeping it mowed doesn't mean the basin's not working.
No, the main problem is pulling the drain plug, so it collects no water.
Well, the development plans that I review now, you know, we have requirements, as does the conservation district, that lists what the maintenance requirements are and who's the responsible party. During construction, it's the contractor, but then afterwards, it's either the owner association or the individual property owner or some of the entities. So and there's, you know, maintenance requirements as well as what they need to do, how frequently you have to do it. But it still is a problem with enforcement as far as what happens if the responsible party does not take action or do the maintenance.
How's it enforced?
That's been the headache that we've seen.
That's what we have.
And then the DMS four permit is trying to stipulate that it's the township's responsibilities, and that's been the big back and forth between the state or DEP and the township representatives. It's not a clear... Township doesn't really have the rights to enter private property and take ownership and maintenance, nor do they want to, but the state's trying to say that they have to. So anyway, clearly defined, I think that's where it breaks now, is that nobody ends up wanting to do it or does do it.
Well, just include that part of your work.
That's what we're supposed to develop. It's now, yeah, it's spelled out on the plans.
The old plan that's not spelled out, that's the problem.
Ted?
In the end, I have three short questions. Number one, all due respect, I'm sure, obviously, you're a highly qualified civil engineering firm. I'm just curious how Remington Vernon came to be chosen as our township's new engineer? Was there some recommendations that you received or...
We asked for a...
Do you want to drop this?
All of these from all the engineering firms in the tri-state area, and then we sat down with them, talked to them, and made a decision.
Awesome. Okay.
We advertised, posted on our website, and they were amongst 35 engineering firms.
Wow.
Which we interviewed, how many?
We interviewed down...
Too many.
We narrowed it down to three for each.
Is there ever a case where, this is the second of, I said, three short ones. Is there ever a case where kind of an ad hoc type research project like this should be kind of put out the bid as opposed to simply take your engineering firm and tell them, "Give me a proposal"? I mean, these seem somewhat specialized compared to the everyday, day-to-day engineering needs that the township would rely on.
If they were, if there were a perceived need, we could go and hire outside of the contract. It's not an exclusive contract.
Okay.
What's your third?
Third, since the... Regarding the Chandler Mill Bridge, since the, at the moment at least, I believe, I think I'm right, that certainly if the bridge was to be reconstructed as a two-lane bridge, it's under the jurisdiction and financial responsibility of the county to rebuild that bridge. Isn't asking this firm to study that a little bit of a duplicative effort of what the county engineer probably either has already done or would do for it?
Because we may not want to do that. We may want to take it back and do something else.
The county will not do a study on it remaining or being rehabbed as a one-lane bridge or remaining as a pedestrian bridge. They're only looking at a two-lane new bridge.
So I guess Ted's question is if county's already only doing the two lanes, should you just look at the two one-lane options? The walking or the non-walking one lane? Is that what you're saying?
Well, that would be my follow-up.
Yeah. Because...
Yeah, we can eliminate the two-lane bridge option as...
Since it wouldn't cost us anything anyway.
Well, I mean, the thing is, if you leave it in there, what you can do is you can also look at the roads that are around because you heard about truck traffic. So if you had a two-lane bridge, it would open it up to trucks. So then there'd be increased truck traffic on Chandler Mill Bridge if you've walked there and gone there for a while. It's pretty narrow windy road. It is officially 18 feet wide, but that's to the inside, I think, of the bike lines, which sort of fall off at one edge.
And it's a stone wall on the other side.
Trucks going down there. So we had it left in because we want to take a look, not only the cost of the bridge itself, but also what, how it would impact the township because it would cost the township money.
Okay, that makes sense. I don't want to be penny wise.
Yeah, no, it's a good question. So why don't we leave it in, but maybe you can, don't have to design the two-lane bridge.
There's had his hand up first.
I just wanted to go back to the collection basins. Where I live, there's two of them. And we were under the impression that township had to sign off because we reconstructed the two basins in the finalization of our development. I thought the township had a responsibility to continue to inspect those basins.
We do.
Okay. The problem is you don't know where the others are.
Well, you mean what John was referring to?
Well, I think Scudder mentioned that when the official asks, "Where are these basins", it's difficult for the township to come up with.
Well, they're talking about just outfalls, which are different than the basins. And they're also talking about if we have a storm drainage system down Rosedale Road, and then there's a pipe that goes off onto somebody's property and then dispenses the water on their property, we're required to point, map where all of those are.
I see. I got you. But for the basins like the Drury Gardens has, if we fall out of compliance, township will inform us, and then it's our responsibility to fix it.
Correct.
Okay.
Lana?
I just wanted to go back to the Chandler Mill Bridge one. And first of all, thank you for doing this, for proposing this. This has been a long time coming. We really appreciate the administration doing this. Our engineer from the Chandler Mill Bridge Consortium couldn't be here, but he looked at the proposal, and he asked that, I guess you've already answered the question about the two-lane alternative because $75,000 was already spent saying why the two-lane had to happen. But I understand now that it's the roadway that you're interested in, so that's great. He was hoping, he said, maybe save some funding by... He saw two options, and that's the, and just to reward these would be helpful so that if you're looking to take back, he said one should be a historic rehab of the one-lane vehicular bridge, so historic rehab is the key. And then the other was a conversion to pedestrian bridge. And then he also asked that for each, there be a type, size, and location, a T S and L to each. I was asked to add those comments.
Okay.
But again, we really appreciate this. It's been a long time coming.
He's writing it down, so.
Great.
For the right line of which.
Great, thank you.
It's important for all of us. It's an important question for the community, and it needs to be heard by everybody, and everybody has to have a chance to be heard. And that's what we're about.
Great, thank you.
Yes?
Is it the intent that all seven, because I think seven studies are going to be done, they're all near-term, or some of these studies that aren't really going to be started for three or four months? I just...
Well, there, I mean, some of them will be started right away, and then when they're finished, the other ones will be completed. So probably in the next five months, they'll all be complete.
Is it in order?
No, we have prioritized them, with Chandler Mill Bridge being number one.
So I guess the follow-up to that, is there a reason why the township feels like it needs to enter into all seven of these agreements today, and something might change in a month or two or three that affects something that's not going to be started until May or June?
Well, we all, we need to get them all started because they'll have their bridge specialists working on the one, they'll have their sewer engineer working on the others, and, you know, so they're all, you know, they'll all be moving along. So we do need to get them signed now.
And I would assume that by starting the process now, even though it's not done, the three months down the road, you have that lead time, and they need to be able to plan for that. So if we wait until three months to start, to sign the contract and start the process, now we have another three-month lead time. Now we're six months from now. So we get started, and those that can get done quickly, those that take longer, but they're all in motion, and that's the goal.
Well, there, on top of that, the sanitary sewer proposals are required. You have timelines, you have annual reports.
Same for stormwater.
Chapter 94 report. DMS four is required yearly permit gap, have annual reports submitted and compliance activities that are done throughout the year. So those can't wait. And then the other ones, you know, the pavement management system was a top priority, and same with the sewer, sanitary sewer, future planning stuff because of the issues we're having with online systems and home stations that are, you know, not operating properly.
And you're going to be doing all of these?
No.
So if you want to tell us...
I've got 260 people in my company. It's strictly civil engineering, so it's transportation, it's NEP, it's civil survey, land development, sanitary water systems, so the whole gamut of civil engineering projects. It's not just majors. A lot of people behind me.
Paul, did I get a question?
Yeah, I just want to, and I think this is what's going to happen, I just want to verify that this information we're collecting on the Chandler Mill Bridge would be part of fuel for future meetings for the entire community to be looking at. And I want to just make sure that people know that I understand the serenity and the peace and quiet that has been developed by the closing of that bridge for those that live along and use Chandler Mill Bridge. But I'd also like to be noted that the contrary of that has been spilled over onto Kalen Road, and those that live off of and access Kalen Road have had the increase in traffic that has occurred because of that throughway of over 100 years. Because if there was a need for a bridge back in 1910, I can't imagine there's still not a need for something there to transverse traffic, you know, 100 years later. So I just want there to be a balance in this that if you want to make Kalen Road the only road that goes through the township, make it four lanes. But right now, we have increased traffic, increased safety problems, and increased trouble accessing it during traffic times that would normally be going other roads.
So Bob, your point is well taken, and the goal, recently, this meeting that Lisa mentioned was to have occurred by now in the new year, but in January.
Yeah.
And for a lot of reasons, not the least of which is that we were not getting from the old engineers, the updated information we had asked for at the last time we had a meeting, which was...
March.
Yeah, a year ago. So what's going to have happened? So now we're going to make it happen with the updated information. The goal, in my mind, in scheduling this was to look directly at the traffic implications. There are parts of the township that are on the other side of the stream. How do, how do we get school buses and emergency vehicles to them? How do we address that? There's all kinds of questions, and there are people that, on Roundhill, I guess, that did not plan on being a throughway connecting up Chandler Mill and Kalen, and on and on and on. So how do we meet our transportation needs as a community? And still look at other aspects of it, too. There's a lot of balance in it. So your question is very important, and that's what I want to address directly.
Thank you.
That's it.
Following you up with what Gwen had suggested about the historic reconstruction as a one-lane bridge, I don't, obviously, I'm not an engineer. I'm assuming if it's, if something would happen that way, following historic guidelines, that might almost be a fourth option versus reconstructing it as a one-lane modern bridge? I'm just throwing that out there. The engineer would have to decide whether that's a, is it a fourth option, or is it just a part B of option two?
Well, it is an historic bridge, and it's nationally certified.
Right.
So...
But if you're looking at it as a two-lane, if the county rebuilds it as a two-lane bridge, obviously, it's not going...
They don't rebuild it. If they're building a two-lane bridge, it's a two-lane bridge.
Right.
That goes away.
Exactly.
But if it's going to be rebuilt, it's going to be rebuilt in essentially what it is historically or as a walkway. And those are the two options that are on the table as far as I'm aware. Maybe that there are other options when they look into it and tell us their thoughts. But it seems, I don't know that it's practical to rebuild it as a modern bridge but keep its historical nature. I don't think that's in the cards.
Well, yeah, I don't know. I'm just asking the question. You know, I mean, what Gwen said has merit. I just wondered if there's, you know, does the historical reconstruction add cost to it that you might be able to avoid if you just rebuilt what you had as a non-historic one-way, one-lane bridge?
I'm sure there's cost implications for building it either way, whether it's a brand-new one-lane bridge or, you know, trying to preserve the historical nature.
Right.
There's going to be a cost difference, and you have to decide what's the benefit of spending the money towards.
I'm just, you know...
Sure. The answer's yes, but there's going to be cost concerns or complications.
Exactly. And that's what we're trying to figure out.
Any of the options.
Bill?
Once the study is completed and reviewed by the supervisors, and the supervisors make a tentative decision, does the county have any more authority if the decision is not what the county wants or what the county has agreed to?
And then present it to the public, have a public meeting. The county requires that they have a consensus from the residents, all of the residents.
A survey or something like that?
Yes, we have to do a survey to see what the residents want. And then the county will decide if they will give us the bridge.
So if the...
That's what they told us.
The real decision is first the county's.
Correct.
Okay.
I think we also have to figure out what we want to do as a community.
Right.
What the different costs are. And up until now, there's been numbers put out and other information out there that's not been helpful for the discussion. So now we've got one group, one engineering firm that's going to look at the three major options, pros and cons, including the traffic aspects involved, not only on Chandler Mill, but all around it in the medical community, those are called collaterals.
Yeah.
And give us an idea of what those options are, what they cost, not just the construction cost, but the entire cost, including maintenance later on. And then figure out then how to proceed with those three different options, find out how those get funded, how they can get modified, and have public input on what's the way to move forward.
Okay. And I thought that's the way it was going to happen, but the possibility exists that the supervisors can decide on a option. A survey will say the township residents have maybe a differing view.
Right.
But that all goes to the county commissioners for a final decision?
Yeah, the county owns the bridge right now.
Okay.
So I think ownership probably matters.
Okay.
My guess is...
I like the owners agreeing with that statement.
My guess is that the county would prefer not to have to deal with it, so if we wanted it, they'd probably say, "How about it?"
Okay.
I think you had a question.
In the interest of transparency, could you make an effort to post the studies once they're completed on the website so we can have an opportunity to look at?
Yes. Yes.
Me?
Yes.
I just wanted to thank you because this has been over two years, and I live on Captain Robinson Drive right off of Bucktoe. Most of the people I know would like to see the bridge reconstructed as it is, one lane. So I'm just giving you my feeling and a thank you for getting this moving along and doing the survey. That's the only thing to do at this point.
Well, thank you for being here and working with us on this. It's important for all of us.
You're welcome.
Gwen?
I just wanted to ask, too, again, thank you. The main thing is when we talk about cost, and when we get there, over $11 million has already been invested in this area for open space, trails, nature preserve, historic preservation, there's an African-American cemetery. So keeping in mind cost, when we weigh the cost, please keep that... cemetery. So keeping in mind cost, when we weigh the cost, please keep that in mind of what's already been spent by state, county, and private funding.
Yeah, I think, I think we're going to have a lot of long discussions about this, but I think when we can figure out at least what the bridge costs and the roads costs are and what the options are, and putting through the options in a clear, by one group will help us as a community come to a better decision or a decision.
How long do you think this study will take?
I think it's in the proposal. No, it's not. I forget. We talked about this and we talked about all of these at the same time. So I forget exactly what I told you.
I thought we said like six weeks.
I can get back here on that.
Is that, is that, you'll get back to it, but is that a far-off guess that you're talking about?
No, I think that's probably pretty close. It's not going to take all that long. 1% plans and photos and concepts, back to the board, you know, presentation quality, materials that you can use. And we're not doing any actual design work. So I think six weeks, two months is probably.
So that means we probably wouldn't have the meeting until May because then we'd get into having it during everybody's spring breaks and people were upset with that last time. So we probably, it'd probably be wise to wait until May to have the meeting.
We would want to get some feedback from the supervisors, from Tam Asher first, you know, try to refine more for what your vision is than presented.
And we're going to have the meeting at the Red Clay Room when we finally get a date finalized it because we hope that more residents will come.
There'll be, there'll be, we won't need standing room alone, which is what it was in here when we did it before.
And we'll have our emergency service providers there as well to get their input.
Is every scrap of whatever's already been studied about this bridge been made available to them?
It is available. At our last, the last time we were together, it was all videoed and it was also taken down with a court reporter. So it's word for word, letter for letter, dot for dot. It's all there. So you can hear what was said.
Yeah, I'm talking about engineering stuff, you know.
No, it's, it is six weeks. I wrote that down.
That's what I thought. Yeah.
Right, and the prior engineering studies.
That's all on, on the website, actually.
Yeah. And then we have a file that he's.
Can I just ask to make sure the Liechtenstein report that was done specifically for historically rehab in 2007 could be used and updated because you don't need to reinvent, invent the wheel?
I'm just, I'm just beginning of that. What was that again?
I was just saying, there's a Liechtenstein report that was commissioned by the consortium in 2007 that was specifically for a historic rehab. And that could be used. That was one of two, instead of reinventing the wheel, look at that and see how that jives with what the bridge is now and bringing it up to date.
Well, Gwen, if you have a copy of it at some point, would you make it available to them?
Sure. It's in our file here.
Yeah, my recollection is you presented it when we were together.
We have.
Been a lot of water under this bridge.
We've been waiting to say no.
So he's trying to come up to speed to get us a view of what the made options are. There, there may be more work later on as he, as you might have heard, but he's going to, we might want to refine things as we go forward. And I think that this will, this will help us with our dialogue and our discussion. So thanks for all your input.
Is there any other input at this point or may we vote on this?
You need to make statements.
No, this was, was moved in second.
Yeah.
All seven were moved in second. All right. Any other comments? Paul for your question. I'll vote it.
Right.
No, Paul, it's good. Passes. Thank you.
Now you need to do a separate motion for the budget over for the engineering.
Yeah. And so as you recall, as a community, the, when Lisa presented the engineering proposals, she pointed out that some of them will exceed what has previously been budgeted for engineering purposes. The tune of $45,000.
Yeah.
And we need to adjust the budgets to reflect that change so we can carry out what we just voted to do. So now I have a motion.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Yes, Gwen?
The BAC policy didn't address adjusting the budget. It's just.
No, it's an overage.
You just approved the overage.
Right.
Budget remains the same.
Correct.
So you just have to approve that it's okay to spend the money.
That we just wanted to say.
Okay. So we're not changing the budget. We're just dealing with the overage.
Right.
Okay. All okay?
Well, I thought we did those.
Well, we did approve to do it. Now we're doing the overage.
Yeah, the overage.
Okay.
Comment with the overage. We hadn't voted to do it.
All right. So it's authorized.
Whatever.
Okay.
Make the progress.
And it was, however it's authorized, it was done by three of the, of the.
Gwen, would you like these letters?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
These are the Eastman letters.
Right, thanks.
Yes. Thank you. Okay, we're moving along on this, this agenda from hell. KAU funding request.
So we received a quest, a request from the KAU Little League for a contribution. The contribution was for $20,000. $15,000 was for common ground pathways and safety netting. And $5,000 was the completion of the batting cages and grounds. So we have John Tucker here from KAU Little League. We also have Rich Lyon here from Kennet Area Park Authority because one of the fields lies within the park authority's property. So I think he has some questions as well. So John, do you want to explain anything to the supervisors about your request?
Well, first let me introduce myself. I am John Tucker. I'm the president of KAU Little League. I'm in my second term. And I appreciate being invited back. I appreciate that we, all 600 and whatever kids appreciate the support the township has shown us in the past. I just wanted to, I don't want to reiterate everything Lisa just said, but we, we do have some unfinished work to be done. We did do a lot of work last year. We didn't get to everything. And any consideration offered by the township to help us finish the project is greatly appreciated. And would benefit the kids in Kennet and Chatsworth, Unionville Consolidated School Districts who we support. So I'll gladly answer any questions from Richard.
Let me, let me check and see. The amount of work that you need to have done is about $20,000. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
But you haven't given us a specific proposal that you'd like us to give you, a specific amount you'd like us to give, whatever we can give?
Will gladly. I'm here hat in hand. So correct. You know.
They're asking Kennet Township for $20,000.
Okay. So you're, you're asking for the whole Magilla.
That's, that's the request. Yes.
This comes out of the Thielu, doesn't it?
Correct.
Yeah, I learned something here tonight too. Another gentleman asked that question. I was trying to figure out how that comes full circle. It's good to know.
Last year, you received $32,000 from the township?
$15,000.
Fifteen. Okay. Oh, because I thought you said you got 32.
Yeah.
And do you expect in future years to have other needs? Or do you think this will finish it, assuming we don't get floods or, you know, unexpected things?
I'd like to say that we typically are a self-supporting organization through our, you know, our membership fees and registration fees and other fundraising activities from golf outings and snack shack and things like that. Every once in a while, we do embark on a rather significant capital campaign. And that's really what we're coming out of. Not a capital campaign, capital expenditure. So we, we did most of it in 2013. We didn't get it all done. So to answer your question, I don't expect to be back at your doorstep next year.
Wait, hold on a minute. Richard, did you have some questions?
Yeah, Richard Lyon, handsome Beenixon Park with Kennet Area Park Authority. We heard about this last night at our meeting. And since one of your borefields is in our park, we just asked that we'd be part of the dialogue to understand what's happening as it affects the park property and if we could have this discussion. That's what we're asking for.
Sure. In particular, what's, what's the current request for, as we mentioned, is for some safety improvements involving the grounds and the batting cages. One of the batting cages is located on the lower field, as we call it, in the park. The batting cages in particular are not finished in the sense that there's still subflooring that needs to be done. Right now, it's just, you know, rather raw. And we need to make a subfloor with crushstone and some other things. We also need to make them another 15 feet bigger. We learned that they're a little too short for safety considerations. So we're going to do that to both of the batting cages. One batting cage is located in the entity next to the park area of the complex. The other batting cage is located on the Kennet Township side of the complex. That's the only portion of this current request that would be involving the lower field in the park.
Would that affect the Red Clay Trail that runs along? Because that one's already kind of precarious on the embankment there.
No, this is not along the water or trail. This is kind of behind the dugout. That's where the batting cage is, like in between home plate and first base, back in that area. So it wouldn't be involving that area that you're talking about.
I have a quick question for the gentleman. And thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Have you, you received funding from other organizations like the Kennet charities, you know, Kennet Run, Mushroom Festival, the other things that we do as a community to raise money?
No, not from those organizations. We don't receive from the Kennet Run. We do request from, for example, Exelon. From time to time, it's given us money for different things.
Yeah, I'd like, I hope Lisa put me in touch with you. I'd like you to have, do a program before Longwood Rotary. Because we do community funding, as Hanson Beenixon Park could testify to. It's the kind of thing that we kind of get into. You don't fund everything all the time, but you should be a known commodity to the Longwood Rotary.
Okay. I'd like to follow up with you on that.
Yeah.
Appreciate that. You were saying something?
I was just wondering if the United Way helps you out as well?
No, the only United Way donations we get are people who designate KAU Little League to receive those funds. We don't get anything from general United Way funds, just operating funds or anything like that.
This is Eva Repland, and I'm also on the park board. And I'm just wondering, adding on to what Richard was saying, I think making it's important when we, when you do something on the field that is owned by the park, that maybe you discuss it with us and tell us what you're doing, what you're planning to do. I don't know whether that's been planned or are they down or not?
No, we have had a little dialogue, but you know, that's probably here tonight, hoping we can start that up.
Well, we had a little dialogue last year. I forget the woman's name, but she indicated that our, our flagpole out in center field of the lower field was obstructing the pathway for one of your emergency vehicles or a little gator that somebody drives. And requested that we cut that down and we did. And we're, you know, I'm open to a relationship proving upon it without doubt. Not that there's any issues that I know of. We're glad we worked together.
That's a mail account.
We can exchange information after that. We'll be very much.
Okay.
What other municipalities contribute to KAU?
In terms of funding, the reality is that the only other township that's really stepped to the plate in our years has been New Garden Township. If you look at our membership, we're roughly one-third Kennet resident, Kennet Township residents. The other third is New Garden Township residents. And then the other third is a mixture, as you can imagine, the other, the other townships. New Garden has, I guess it's been about four years ago, we entered into a long-term lease arrangement for two fields in New Garden Township Park. So they didn't give us cash. They gave us a 20-year operating lease to develop on our dime and maintain on our dime two fields there. So that was a big, big step for us to procure those two fields for, you know, what was at that time a really growing program. So that's really the only other township that's supported us in any way in the last five years that I know of.
It was my understanding in your letter that you were going to make a similar request to New Garden and to the Borough.
Right. In 2012, when we did that, New Garden said, no cash at this time. The township said, excuse me, the Borough said, no, thank you. East Moore Borough didn't even respond. This current request of $20,000, I haven't gotten feedback yet. I don't know where it stands relative to the response from those entities, but I can pretty much guess where it's going.
Well, if, if they both responded favorably, would you, the total you need from aggregate is $20,000. So that under those circumstances, you'd need roughly $7,000 from the township.
Proportionately, if you look at it that way. Yes.
What you need is $20,000. How it gets chopped up, if there were only two municipalities, you'd need 10 from each.
And last time when we came here asking for funds, I mean, we outlined a, a pretty aggressive number. And Kennet Township supported us to roughly two and a third of that number.
Okay. And how did you make up the other two thirds?
Well, we did our own funds. We.
You mean from your pocket? Or what do you mean our own funds?
So we had a $75,000 total project, of which 55 has been funded. Of that 55, 15 came from Kennet Township, 40 came from KAU. So yes, our own CapEx budget, which we, we spent on this project, we spent a lot of our own money on this project, but obviously we don't, we don't generate it at a rate that we needed to in order to finish it in time. I mean, we do spend a lot of our own money on all of our fields every year. But this type of project comes along only every so often. So to answer your question, no, no other township has, has contributed cash towards this project.
So if we were to do the same thing this year as we did last year, that is give you one-third of it, you would propose to make up the difference in the same fashion as by fundraising through, by your fees or whatever?
Exactly. Or we would just cut back some of the project. I mean, we have that flexibility. I mean, we always, we all, first of all, most all of our labor is done with volunteers. So, you know, the impact of 7,000 is really more like 14 if we were paying retail. So that's kind of a good thing. But yeah, we could always cut back on a portion of our project. You know, we get done what we get done. And the fact that we didn't do all 75,000 last year is evidence of that. We did $55,000.
So what happened to the balance that was not done last year? That's what we're dealing with now?
That plus, plus a little bit more. Like I said, we encountered some safety issues on the, on the new batting gate that they were too short. We need, we need to expand those. So that wasn't in the original plan.
Okay. Does, does anybody else have questions or comments on this? We don't have a motion on the floor, so I'm not sure where we're going with it. Would somebody like to start the process?
I'll move to refund them.
To the tune of?
20K. It comes out of the Thielu, which is really a separate kind of a park. We can't use for a lot of things anyhow. So I'm not too worried about. It's the end of the budget.
Okay. And then we would need to, to address the overage at the same time?
Yeah.
Okay. So could both those components be in your motion?
I omit my motion into including overage of the other budget. Yes.
Is there a second?
Seconded. And we have the discussion?
Sure.
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's a tough spot, right? In terms of trying to figure things out. And I'm just always worried that, you know, it's useful that I think we can support you because I think it's a good organization. You guys, and gals, do a lot for the, for the kids. And I guess if this is more of a, well, two offs, since it was last year and this year. Last year, we, we funded them 15. So. Last year, we funded them 15, so I'm not sure why it's coming up this year. You know, if you look at year on year, I think someone in the back asked about year on year.
Well, this is the balance of the project from what I understand.
Yeah, yeah. But you know, they can try to fundraise elsewhere. I'm just saying what I'm thinking.
No, no, that's, that's what it's about.
Okay, so that's what I was, I was thinking.
If one of the other municipalities would fund you, would you, you'd burst a rebate on?
Yeah, I'm not gonna pull that.
In the spirit of fairness, yes, I mean, we clearly would.
With the odds of that.
We wouldn't answer. We wouldn't double dip.
The odds are more and more of it is split, I know.
Again, obviously, any number is gratuitous, we appreciate it, we do this for the kids, and regardless, we won't be back next year. I kind of feel bad that I'm here this year.
Well, is it, is it, do you have in mind in your long-term planning, other projects that are going to require this kind of financial commitment from, from your, your sources of income, us? Or is this, this could be the last time you're back with five-figure requests for a while?
Yeah, I mean, I don't, it was probably five years ago that we were last here with that, maybe six. And like I said, projects like this come around only every so often. This was presented to us when our organization basically changed to a different dimensioned field. The little league, you know, for elevens and twelve, used to play on a 60-foot field. Now it's moved to a 70-foot basis, and the outfield, instead of being 200 feet, is now 240 feet. So we were kind of in a tight bind to get this done in a short window, basically, you know, August, because once season ended and our fall season didn't begin, we have winter and weather, and so we, you know, we were in a bind last August. So we don't have any long-term planning, anything similar to what we do here at the township. We're a little more seat of the pants other than that. But having said that, no, I don't anticipate any significant capital expenditures or changes to what we do or how we do it that would necessitate us going out asking for significant dollars.
And when would you need this money?
Well, our spring season is supposed to start April 1st, but there's still a foot of snow on the ground. Typically, this is the time that we would be doing some of these improvements now, before the season starts, get these improvements to the batting cages now, before the season starts.
So in March, at their next meeting?
Correct. March.
Yes, sir.
I'm Clark Boggs, I'm a resident of the township, and it just occurs to me that the, the $20,000 is for one-third of, the $20,000 benefits one-third of their contingency, which are our residents. So I think what you're questioning in your mind is whether, why should we fund 100% when only a third is ours? And what you might want to do is fund a smaller percentage and see if you can needle East Moorborough or whatever to add additional funds, because it is for a good cause, rather than just bite the whole bullet and say, oh, we got lots of money left to do.
I think that's what was right last year, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So.
It didn't work last year, it won't work this year.
It's a smaller pie this year than last year, so. Do we decide now, or do we?
I'll call the question. If you, if you don't want to decide now, then make a move to table it.
I don't know if there's anything new we learned in two weeks, so. It's just that I see an increase in the funding, and I might, I'd be more comfortable if I had 15, and that leaves five for them finding some other fundraiser that they don't have to find as, as big a pot somewhere else from asking other townships. Maybe it'll have more success than when they were looking for a lot more money from the other townships or fundraisers. That's, that's what I'm most comfortable with.
Are you amending, are you moving to amend the motion?
Can I do that?
Well, yeah.
Motion to second, you either have to vote on that, or the maker and the seconder have to withdraw it and a new motion may be made.
Well, you think he thought 20, and I'm thinking 15.
Are you firm with that?
Not necessarily, no, I just want to fund the whole thing, if I can, I can say the reduction. I don't know if he can, but.
That's why we have an agenda.
And you, and you could come back at a later time to the pot, as we get into the, as we get into the season and your needs become clear.
You could. You can say no at that time as well.
Don't encourage us.
Yes, to your questions, yes. But again, I came in here hat in hand, and if 15,000 is the number, I'll walk out of here with a smile on my face.
Okay. Change to 15? Okay.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
All. Why? Three is it? Okay. All right. Library member.
So Marla Palmer was our township, one of our township representatives on the library, and she has resigned as the representative. We do have another resident, Joel Fishman, who already serves on the library board, and he has agreed to be the second township representative. So supervisors need to decide if you wish to appoint him as the official, as one of the official township representatives.
She'll move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Exposed or not? Good, okay. George?
Yes.
You're on.
Wake up. I'm awake. And I, I want to, I want to thank you guys for supporting the, the KU. I actually own their 90-foot diamond as part of the NBF property that we own, and we've always tried, we've never charged them, and it is a good group, and they do work hard for every penny that they're able to raise, so. I'm here this evening to talk about ordinance 197, that was ordinance that was passed two and a half years ago. At that, at that point in time, I made comments similar to what I'm going to make this evening, and at that, that point in time, when it was going through the planning commission, I'm afraid my comments fell on, 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 I guess I just didn't get a response to the comments that I made. And what I've done is taken the ordinance and marked it up in red, and I did one draft earlier, and I just refined it a little bit more. All right, I have four copies. Bob, I think you're the only planning commission member here, so I'm going to do one of you two. The ordinance was, was, oh, okay, well, I'm out of, I'll give you, I'll give you this one. The ordinance was, was written to provide for elderly housing in, in the township, and I had gone through the ordinance, and I found a couple of problems with it then that still exist. And the first was, the original ordinance was written with a certain program in mind. And that certain program that, that this ordinance was kind of tailor-made for, even at the time that they passed the ordinance, there was no longer any funding for. I want to think Jeremy knows a little bit about elderly housing, Jeremy Abelson, but um.
From our future needs, Jeremy.
The ordinance was written for a, a program called the HUD 202, which no longer gets funding from HUD, it hasn't for many years. And the HUD 202 was specific to nonprofits, it was specific to household incomes out of below 50% in the median. Primary funding vehicle today is, is a mechanism that's a tax credit, and the tax credit can't be used by a nonprofit. The, the entity that does the development has to be, it's typically a partnership that is a for-profit partnership. The incomes dealt with are 60% in the median, not 50% in the median.
Does that, does that, when you say the, the law that involves that tax credit, does that have a name, or?
It's called the, section 42 of the IRS code, it's called the low-income housing tax credit.
Thanks.
And I said, it's kind of a funny mechanism, because it's a housing funding mechanism in the IRS code. So I, I had marked this up to basically reflect what the real world is today for, for elderly housing, and the mechanism is actually the same mechanism that we're using to build Granite Ridge on McFarland Road. This, this ordinance is just specific to, to age-restricted housing, to elderly housing. The funding mechanism would be very much the same. The third change I threw in here was, I'd gone through the zoning map, and the ordinance is, is, I'm going to call it an overlay, loosely termed overlay for LI and BP, and I went through the zoning, the zoning map and looked, and there are very few pieces of ground that you could actually apply this zoning ordinance to, especially when you look at, at the nuances of, of, well, what would that perfect piece of ground be for? An affordable elderly community, and you'd want to be by shopping, you'd want to be, have access to a decent-sized road, be somewhere near the Y, possibly somewhere near the library, depending on where, where that might end up. But, but also shopping, and so I believe that the, that the right piece of ground is on the east side of the borough, probably in the township, and I could, I could actually point to the two or three pieces that would probably be applicable. But what I've done is, is ask that the, the township consider including the commercial district as, as a third district where the, where this, this overlay could be used. There's not much commercial ground in the town, but as a case in point, where you look at the Waze Lane intersection, one side of the Waze Lane intersection is a BP, and the other side is a commercial piece. And it goes, it would work on one and not on the other, it doesn't seem to make that much sense. And the fourth change that I'd thrown in here is.
Sorry.
Yes.
So currently, what zonings or what areas is allowed in?
The BP and the LI.
The BP and LI.
And I would just ask that you consider including the commercial district also, because it seems to be from a locational standpoint, and appropriateness, appropriateness standpoint seems to make sense. And the only other change I made in here.
Let me ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
When you mentioned Waze Lane, the intersection for Waze Lane, were you talking about on Walnut, or were you talking about on?
On, on, at the top of the hill.
Bottom of the hill.
Bottom of the hill.
Okay, sorry, thanks. So you're talking about up there, next to the current library property?
Yes, next to one of the two, two library sites today. The, and then the other, the other thing I picked up when I read the ordinance was, the ordinance calls for 16 dwelling units an acre, and it talks about a, a total project size of 80 units. So 16 units an acre and 80 units. But then the minute, the, the gross tract area was, was set at 10. And when I do the math, five acres times 18, or, you know, five acres times 16 gets you to 80, not 10 acres. And I didn't understand what the math was requiring five or 10 contiguous acres there when it's 16 units an acre, but you can only have an 80-unit project, if you follow the math there. So I thought that the, the maximum size should have been five, I just thought there was bad math done when, when the ordinance was come up, when someone had drafted the ordinance, because there's, and to make someone buy like 10 acres of ground, when in fact, they can really only build a density with, with the five acres, you're not going to end up with affordable housing, you're going to end up with very expensive housing, because you just bought twice the land that you really need.
I'd like to recommend, I was on the planning commission team that helped develop this ordinance, and it was done in light of what the requests were then, and things have changed. I recommend you remand it back to the planning commission team to rework it.
I was going to get that, but I wanted to let George finish his presentation.
And I would, would ask that, that in the interest of time, there is an opportunity to get something like this funded, and that window is a window, I know someone else had a window of next week, my window is actually next month.
Hold your breath, buddy.
Okay.
It's not going to be tonight, so.
No, I, I didn't think it was, I don't know what the timing is. I don't think, I won't say my, my requests are de minimis, but they're not much more than that, so I'd ask that if this could be expedited, I would appreciate that. If not, I understand that the, the township wheels turn at the speed they turn.
They require the planning commission.
I'm going to receive this to do two things. One is to give a copy to, to the planning commission to address it, and also give it to council, because there's a lot of legality in here, and I want, I want, with all due respect, and I have a great deal of respect for you, George, I hope you know that, but I'm not sure that you're a lawyer, so I'd like to have, I'd like to have the legalities and the references and whatnot checked through to make sure that that part of it works as well.
And I agree.
So I want feedback from both those sides, so that we can make this thing come together and not have to do this again.
Got it. If I may, Mr. Chairman. I'm not sure that the planning, the planning commission should look at this. This is a suggestion for changes. This is not an ordinance that has been drafted by the township to amend the existing ordinance to make whatever changes we think are appropriate to the ordinance. That ordinance is required to be sent to both the local planning commission and the county planning commission for a minimum 30-day review prior to any public hearing on enacting the ordinance that has yet to be drafted. So I don't want to jump too far ahead, but we can certainly get the process started by checking the legalities of the proposed changes, and if the board is of a mind, authorizing the drafting of an ordinance that amends the zoning ordinance to make these changes, at which time that ordinance would be sent to the planning commissions.
And also, I'd like to make note that, Rich, I think you were at the last comprehensive plan meeting, we're talking about the east side of the borough. I mean, the west side, I'm sorry, the borough, which is where I think you were just talking about.
East side, you were right first, huh?
We were talking about the west side, though, too, as being a spillover. But anyway, we'll.
Got it.
Yeah. Your timing is good, as far as that goes, I would say.
Well, I'm not sure from what I've heard, my timing isn't that good, but things will happen when and as they need to happen.
I may not be nice enough at your time.
I've, I've, I've been here for quite some time, and I'm not going anywhere, and it's an idea that, that is timely now, and, and it should remain timely next year, or next year's funding, because I don't think anything's going to go away, but it is something that I had, and I appreciate the supervisors listening, because I made some of these same comments several years ago, and they kind of fell on deaf ears, and, but now I appreciate someone listening in.
Just say that in terms of the comprehensive plan, I mean, we're, we're looking at that now, and this would be totally appropriate to, to discuss in, in the context of that review, but I would say, you know, don't hold your breath until we, we get through with it, because we still have a, a way to go to, to come up with a complete change. And I think that the, the change in zoning is something we want to take a pretty hard look at.
Yeah, I think that was the thing that I was thinking about, there's a reason why there's a commercial zone, and it's focused on commercial activities. The other parts seem to be more just updating what the appropriate federal vehicle is that's, that's driving this. So that's what I was thinking also, that the zoning part may be a little bit tougher, if it's a different vehicle and there's some ad stuff allowing a little bit different density, I think that it's, it's worth looking at, but we, I don't, I think we don't, I don't have to, I think we want to get the planning commissions in.
Well, so.
The PC will have to review it.
Then we say, send it to them.
Right.
The planning commission can get a, a comprehensive plan group, which is essentially the same, with a couple of additional people to show up.
We appreciate that.
So why, thank you. You're welcome to get started, looking at this and giving consideration to the issues that are involved, but I, I want to get the technical side of it worked at also, so I want that to go forward in a timely fashion.
Saves us a lot of time.
Yes, absolutely.
So, but I'm not going to officially send it to the PC yet, so if you two take the initiative, and that's not an official request.
Well, why can't you? Well, why can't you, what can you throw in the new business for our next...
Well, because the supervisors just decided that they would like our legal counsel to review the ordinance first.
There may not be anyone.
The changes. And if they agree with the changes, then create a draft for me to officially send to the PC.
I think we might be able to talk about it at our work session rather than at regular planning.
But that's even further from that. Our next meeting is going to be a public meeting.
And which does what, PC?
Yeah, I mean, I wasn't going to bring it up, but I'm not going to officially request your...
Unless things change between now and then.
No, there is, I think what she's saying, of course, is that there is a technical aspect to it being formally sent to the PC. And that starts a clock running. I mean, that's part of the clock. Well, so we don't want that clock to be going yet because we're not ready to start the clock. So we need to get, we need to get the first step before we can start the clock.
Absolutely. I'm more comfortable with going through our chair than just us had Hockley throwing it on.
Yeah, so you guys go at it and have your informal time with it, give you more time with it. They change before you find, before you get to final product, but you'll be in tune with it by then anyway.
Yeah.
Is it clear?
Yeah.
Yeah?
They may have nothing to review, they may have something substantive to review.
George, you all right?
I'm always.
Good. All right, so, I'll just, we're getting close, friends. C, C, D, D, F, E, M, P, and Manure Management, which gives you a clue what this is about.
This is a letter that Scudder received from the Regional Planning Commission. So it's a joint letter, not only with the members of the Regional Planning Commission, but with some other townships. And the letter would go to the Chester County Conservation District Board of Directors. And what it would do is they would request to have involvement in the, they call it the MF, EMP, and Manure Management Process. And it's requesting that all of the townships are notified when these type of plans or permits are submitted to them for review and approval. And obviously, you know, it's for agricultural use. And Roger and I, we sat in a while ago on a, remember Chris Alonso spoke on this and they talked about all the requirements from the Chester County Conservation District on these type of approvals for, on farmland and where they transport the manure and the...
Stipulations, it can be on the ground and...
Right. And at that meeting, we were saying that, you know, we're never informed of those occurrences. So then Scudder brought this letter up and it's right in line of what we were saying that, you know, we should be notified of. They're also saying that they would like to see a more modern approach taken in the best practice manual when establishing minimum standards for large-scale composting operations for both fresh and spent mushroom substrate. So that's what this letter is. There's nine townships that will sign this letter.
Okay, so we have a motion to adopt signing it.
Yes.
Charlie will sign it. Three to zero, thank you. Good. And Michelle Sullivan, Underground Railroad.
Right.
Welcome.
Thank you.
That long room, wasn't it?
Yes, but it's very brief.
We just wanted, in the meeting, the Kennett Underground Railroad Board, wanted to let you know that we're currently working with the National Park Service to extend the Harriet Tubman Byway up through Kennett. It starts now in Dorchester, Maryland, which is where Harriet Tubman was born, comes up through Delaware, will come up 52 and then through Kennett. And not only will this bring national recognition to Kennett Square, but will obviously bring in a lot of tourists who will shop and be excited to be in Kennett, perhaps stay overnight, you know. So anyway, we're excited about this possibility because I think it'll be a very important part of a very important project.
We just, Margot Taylor, I think she's gone, but we were just talking to Margot Taylor about, she's on our scenic byways committee, we were talking to her to try to get initiative moving with the Harriet Tubman. And she was going to talk to Sarah Meadows of our historic commission, see if she would like to join. So maybe we could get you in touch with Margot as well.
Okay. That sounds good.
And at some point I'd like to talk to you because I sit on the Regional Planning Commission and there are activities that you have in Pecobson, I think you're building your headquarters there. And there are things that are happening in Kennett Township and certainly the history of the Underground Railroad is, lays over this whole area regionally. So I think, I think there'd be some advantage to working out a regional approach to this. The Regional Planning Commission may be a way of initiating that. That would get you into Pecobson, Finsbury, the Borough, New Garden, and Kennett Township. That'd be a pretty good part of the core of your focus.
So what would you like from us?
I'd like, we'll find a time that you can come to the Regional Planning Commission and talk to them. And I'd like to get you together with Margot so that that can go forward as well.
Thank you.
I think it's very important. You know, there are lots of things around here that could use some attention to that are on the Underground Railroad focus, buildings that need to be addressed. So there's lots of things to talk about. I'm glad that you're here.
Thank you.
Good. Are there any questions or thoughts or concerns to address on that? Okay. Work.
I wonder if Roger wants to read his report.
Wake up, Roger.
I read it. Thanks.
Passed your bedtime, kid.
So the storms this month have been hard on the budget along with equipment and material. Even though we haven't had large amounts at one time, cold temperatures made for large material use. So far this year, we've used 600 ton of salt and 300 ton of Annie's skid and we had 400 tons of salt in order, which we already received, correct?
Received 200.
Received 200. And when are we supposed to get the other 200?
Next week.
It's going to be warm for three days, so.
Until next week, middle of the week we're going to get a storm.
Right.
Along with the cold weather came jobs such as pothole repairs, quick fixes of small holes and cold patch, which is being used to repair the patches. Trees and limbs are being cut and chipped between storms. Roads that will have summer projects on them are being addressed first. They're working with homeowners and homeowners associations prior to cutting to make sure they understand what's being done. We have contacted PennDOT and are asking them to grind off bumps on Route 52 South in several spots. They were to start last week, but due to the weather, it's on hold. A new information board was built and installed at the Township Recycle Center. Notices will be posted along with other information on the board. The traffic light at Route 52 South is having problems cycling, traffic. After several calls from residents, we found the problem and it's being repaired.
Sun issue on a camera.
The recent ice storm brought down many trees and the crow is working on chipping brush and shoulders of the roads. Recycling center is open dusk to dawn, Monday through Saturday and 10:00 AM plus good Sundays. This month, due to no power, portable generators had to run for three days to all but one of the traffic signals and one pump station. Then it ran for six days at the township building and how many days at the maintenance garage? And the other thing I thought I'd mention that's not on here is the supervisors did come to an agreement with the property owner at the corner of Hill and Dale and Fire to cut the trees back and to create a better site distance there. The project was supposed to start now, but it's going to wait a little bit, but it'll be done soon.
As far as cutting trees is concerned, is it our responsibility to cut trees over power lines or is that Pico's responsibility?
At Ashburn, you see, does it.
Yeah.
And you probably would not want to be up there entangled in the 800.
Wouldn't like their pay, but I wouldn't like to...
Talking to the guys that rescued our street, it's 10 feet above, five feet over there and five feet under.
15.
Supposed to be.
Okay.
Those were guys from New York. They were not around here.
That's probably my friend.
Okay, so we've gotten through the roadwork report. Now we have escrow releases. Richardson's one escrow release.
Richardson's one, our engineer has recommended release of $24,499. I will approve that release.
Second, I have a question.
How much was that?
$24,499.
$24,499.
So do we actually have money in escrow from them or is this the line of credit?
Letter of credit.
Letter of credit, okay. And so is this otherwise a normal process?
That's the finding, that, it's not cash, it's a letter of credit. That's the form of financial security. What it is, draw down from that letter of credit and that'll be issued by the bank and then they give you a letter of credit showing whatever the balance is. Standard.
Okay, thanks.
All of it. All right. Okay, that's best.
Then we added on, I emailed you guys, I'm sorry, I swear this is the last thing. We added on Penn's Manor's escrow release, which I emailed the three of you.
That wasn't on mine.
Yes, I emailed all three of you to...
It wouldn't print on mine, but go ahead.
Oh, it wouldn't print on mine. We had two requests for escrow releases from Penn's Manor in December that we have not released yet because the streetlights weren't operating properly. Penn's Manor's a different situation. We don't have escrow, we don't have a letter of credit, we have to pay them. So we don't have any more money in escrow. These were change order items that the township agreed to pay for.
This is because we took back the responsibility for finishing the work.
Correct.
So this is our contract, it is not their contract.
It is not a letter of credit, correct. So the one escrow release was for $30,509.77. The other release was for $50,805.05. And the, there are three remaining items out there, which are approximately a total of $10,000 that they have to finish.
I know why, I'll tell you later.
Did you not get it?
I got it, but he didn't get it because the email was wrong. It was, it was Kennett PA, it said Kennett dot PA dot US. So it didn't go through. Bounced back on mine when I sent an email in response to it.
But they've done the work.
So regardless, they've done the work for these two change orders. They still have three items to complete out there, but we're not, we have to pay them for those items. So if they don't complete those items, we have to finish them. We're not holding money for them because we don't have any escrow funds to hold or a letter of credit. So they've completed the work, so we need to pay them for these two.
Salute.
Second.
All of it.
No, I...
Any discussion?
We should pay our bills.
We did that.
Okay.
Okay, just go.
All right. Okay. Free zip. All right, so that gets us through our expanded and voluminous agenda. We're down to public comment and we just about lost the audience. Yes, Tom?
Wanted to give you a little update on the Byway project on Route 52. As you know, it's scheduled to start in March. Lisa sent a letter to all residents along Route 52 and also on some of the little feeder roads that feed into it. And we included a map and we also included some instructions. We have set up a website and it's kp.bway@gmail.com and that comes directly to John Hadrick and myself and we're happy to answer any questions that anyone has along the way. I want to thank Lisa for getting the letter out and especially Sarah who dug through and got 104 addresses from the tax rolls, which we appreciate. Today we had one letter returned, so what a good team. So thank you both very much for all your hard work.
And thank you and John for the hard work that you put into this as well, because it's long done and a lot of work and good job.
Thank you. That's great.
Yes, Ted?
This is only because the mention about the Underground Railroad. I remember last year the supervisors adopted a resolution or something along those lines to take at least a preliminary look at the pines. Has anything moved on that?
Well, we try, we've been trying to get a cost estimate done to rehab it. Unfortunately, the owner's assistant who was working with us has not been responsive lately, but we've still been pushing them. I did run into the owner the other day and I mentioned it to him again, so he mentioned he needs to apply for a demolition permit. And, you know, it was explained that he can't just simply apply for a demolition permit. He would have to come in to revise the conditional use application, then the land development application. They were both approved with that house as part of the use. And so we did contact his assistant again yesterday, asking them if we can proceed to get this estimate done. So we're waiting to hear back. We're going to rehab it and I'm going to move there. Just kidding, Joe.
Township inspected?
No.
I asked?
No. The only thing we can do is, per the property maintenance code, from what we understand, is just make sure that the windows are secure, the doors are secure, the roof, but we can't go in it unless they let us.
So you can inspect from the outside?
Right.
Lisa, that was part of, like you said, the conditional use that we approved all that for the hotel. That was supposed to be, was going to be turned into an office building of some kind.
Correct.
And that's what kind of went by the wayside based on the economy and efforts by the owner. So that's where we're at right now, correct? And we're kind of going back to what they should be doing based on the conditional use?
Correct, but we can't force them to rehab that house, but we can deny them demolishing the building because it was part of the conditional use approval and part of land development approval that that building will be used as offices.
Right.
But don't we have, don't we have a way to be active in addressing that building because it's historic and as it is being allowed to molder into the ground, it's being demolished by the ground?
We would order this against that.
And so kind of take an affirmative step to address forcing, forcing the owner to preserve the building.
I have asked that question of legal counsel prior, I've asked of our engineer and our building inspector and everyone has told me that there was not more, anything more we could do other than to make sure the building was secure. Dave has a different opinion.
Make sure it's safe, you know, the provisions of the property maintenance code cover exterior property, structural soundness, and the interior of the property if you, if you can inspect.
property, structural soundness, and the interior of the property if you, if you can inspect. You're allowed to inspect, you go up to the door and you knock, if they say you're not coming in, then your option is to go to the district justice and get an administrative search warrant based on probable cause that there is a code or code violations inside the dwelling. Then you get the administrative search warrant and you execute the warrant and you can cite them, but that's the extent of your remedy under the property maintenance code.
But I'm asking about our demolition code, where it says we're not, they're not allowed to allow demolition by neglect, so I, I'm not that familiar with the, looking at your face, maybe you want to...
Yeah, I need to, I would need to review that division in the demolition ordinance provisions, that's number one. It is difficult even for a historically protected property, a property listed on the National Register of Historic Places, to prevent the owner of the property from either not maintaining it or demolishing it. And they seem somewhat shocking and kind of a, well, what's the designation worth, what's it good for, but the bottom line is that the owner of property has the right to do with certain structures on their property the way they wish.
So, let me ask you to look at, at our code and let's see, and let's, let's see if this township is better able than the rest of the world to address the problem. You know, I understand about the properties on the National Register not being immune from abuse, but our township ordinance is more specific. I mean, we have a, you know, the ordinance is specifically prevents demolition by neglect and you should, you can take a look at it, but I don't have it right here in front of you, but I think there's some specific things in the order that says you can't do or you must do, that sort of thing.
And then the critical part becomes what is the penalty for violating the ordinance?
Right.
Is the penalty for violating the ordinance fines?
One of the penalties for violating the ordinance is that the, you don't issue a building permit for any more construction on the property.
You know, the issue comes down to what, what can you do, what are you allowed to do under the language of your own ordinance, so, you know, citations, fines, you know, you can, you always have the right to file an action in equity with the court and seek to have the court order a property owner to do something, but you've got to meet certain criteria there and a lot of times courts are reluctant to allow the government, in a sense, that's what it is, to come in and tell a property owner what to do with his property if it's not a public nuisance and if it's not in imminent danger of collapse or a potential hazard to the public.
Well, for a safety basis, but...
We understand that, we've struggled with that on the historical commission.
I'm sure.
Time and time again.
In that meeting last year, he seemed to be more than willing for, almost asking the township to help buy it from him.
Of course.
He doesn't have any particular interest in that property, you know, so...
Buy it.
We also talked about whether or not they couldn't find a private foundation or... I'm just saying, you got an Underground Railroad group, maybe they'd like to have a title.
There you go. That's one way.
Unfortunately, they made a commitment.
Well, Dave, I just sent you the ordinance, you can read it.
Thank you.
No, no, not for the buildings.
Doesn't your conditional use thing apply above and beyond all of that? He was given permission to do something with property based on these assumptions.
That's where I was going.
Now, if those assumptions are not met, you have no redress? Oh, well, it's okay.
Terranis Hotel.
Hold on, hold on, what was he giving, what was he granted conditional use permission to do?
Build a hotel.
Build a hotel, that he built, is this the hotel that he built the building that we're talking about?
Next, no.
He was given permission on this site to build a hotel, a restaurant, and rehab this building, this house as office.
Okay, and did he build the hotel?
Yes.
Did he build the other?
Restaurant.
Restaurant, no.
Medical.
And he didn't rehab the house. Was the, was the permission to construct the hotel conditioned on maintaining or repairing, refurbishing the existing structure or was that just a separate element of relief?
It wasn't clear, the people that...
I think it was used as an office at the time.
You get there. We're about to receive the...
It was an office.
Thanks, Larry.
All righty. All right, that interview is now almost 10 of 11. You guys have been incredibly patient and I thank you all. I thank you all very much, but I think it's probably time to say goodnight, dear.